All right, welcome everyone. I call the June 24th, 2020 special city council meeting for Bothell to order. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was again extended until July 1st. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via link for the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to this meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phoning callers during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the visitor comment portion of the meeting. So at this point, we'll make the, we'll take a moment to call, to take roll call for the council members by position on the Webex call. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yeah.
Councilmember Thompson?
I'm here.
Councilmember McAuliffe? Councilmember McAuliffe?
He's here.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Dorr?
Here.
Councilmember Agnew? Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. In addition, the following staff are in attendance. City manager Jennifer Phillips, city attorney Paul Byrne, city clerk Laura Hathaway, finance director Chris Bothwell, police chief Ken Sublerick, judge Mara Rosano, court administrator Courtney White, fire chief Reese Crun. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to read, reiterate some meeting guidelines. Speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you're also streaming the live video, please turn off the sound as there is a delay. So for the council members, if you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up the yellow speaker cards in the lower portion of your screen. I will call as you as I see them. This will help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. And remember to mute your microphone when not speaking and don't forget to unmute it. Because this is a special meeting, the agenda cannot be amended to include any new items. So the first item on the agenda is visitor comment. City clerk, I understand we have four comments?
Yes. Yes, thank you. We've received two written comments and we have two people on the line who wish to provide verbal comments. The first written comment is from Eric Jensen, who wrote regarding funding for the radar navigator program. And the second one is Evan Kim, who wrote regarding funding for the radar navigator program. The first verbal comment that we have online is David Levitin. David, are you there? I muted both of them. David, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Great. I'm going to set the timer for three minutes. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Olson and all the city council members. And thank you to the city manager and the rest of the city staff for the whole budget process. My name is David Levitin and I live in the Norway Hill area of Bothell. And I have a couple of topics I'd like to address. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Olson for his message at the beginning of yesterday's meeting. You stole a lot of what I wanted to say. I also have a lot of respect for Bothell Police Department, but I do think an evaluation needs to be made of who should be responding to most requests. In a recent New York Times Upshot analysis, the percentage of time spent in violent crimes in places like New Orleans was in single digits. Around a third of the time of police calls was spent responding to calls that were noncriminal in nature. I would like to ask, are on police officers the best responders for such calls? I'd love to hear what the chief thinks about. Second, my understanding is that the police contract with the police guild is up for negotiation this year. A number of articles have highlighted that police unions have been anti-reform. Campaign Zero has identified a number of problematic clauses in various police union contracts. I'd like to encourage the city to, the city council to ensure that the union contract is fair to both officers and the general public. Making sure that the officers who are there to protect, to help people are properly rewarded for their work while those who abuse their position are quickly dismissed. And lastly, I'd like to express my support for a couple of things stated in yesterday's meeting. First, I'm very happy that a number of council members have supported fiscal responsibility as a goal. Ensuring we don't take on debt we can't afford is critical. Second, I would like to express my support for Councilmember Thompson's suggestion to make non-motorized transportation a priority. Even when we have the bike and pedestrian infrastructure, this is primarily driven by recreational cycling and not commuter errands. High quality infrastructure look like that seen in much of Europe provides a safe and useful turnoff to cars while being both cheaper and having ability to move more people, not just cars. Thank you.
The next caller we have online is Sarah Gusterson. Sarah, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay, great. You can begin. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Gusterson. I also live in Bothell's Norway Hill neighborhood. I am calling about financial risks related to the police budget. The question is, why here and why now? Mayor Olson's words yesterday answered it. Because of George Floyd's death and other deaths and the growth of protests that have existed for years, people like me are asking questions that I should have asked long before. Now, within the police department, like every other department, we need to identify and manage financial risk, especially with COVID budget pressures. From my own limited experience, Bothell PD is doing an exemplary job. Thus, the free risks that I decide have a very low probability that they would have a high impact on our city if they were to occur. The first risk is police misconduct. This can cost cities millions in legal judgment and increased insurance premiums. Some places like Colorado are making police personally liable for up to $25,000 of settlements. Is this something that Bothell has considered? Second, there are risks related to ongoing police expenses. If officers are under investigation, does the department suspend administrative leave? Third, if there is an excessive force incident with the police stop pension and refuse to rehire the officer involved. So, why do we need these risk management policies when we have confidence in our police? It's because Bothell and our police department are a model for other cities. Folks outside Bothell are watching our protests, our responses. Councilmember McNeil had a moving message in the latest Bothell Bridge about what we're doing right in these times, how we are working together. For me personally, our police chief's decision to release policies and procedures is a great example of working together. Thank you. That's something my friends in other cities are fighting for. I'm telling them, if Bothell can do it, so can you. And that's why now is the time for financially sound police practices and Bothell is the place. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment.
All right, thank you. So we will resume the 21, 2020, 21, 2022 budget workshop and department presentations. So I'll turn it over to the city manager Jennifer Phillips.
Thank you very much. So we'll start with our next department and that is the police department. Chief Suberlik?
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor and city council members. I'm Chief Ken Suberlik and I'll be presenting this evening. I'm going to see if I can get my presentation up here correctly. All right, it can be taught. So as I start the presentation, at any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to interject. Because the window is so small, it's hard for me to make everybody out here. So just speak up and I'll stop and try to answer questions as I go. I'd like to start off this presentation by acknowledging that we are at a crossroads in this country concerning police and criminal justice reform as a whole. Communities and law enforcement around this country are rethinking how we want police to police. And this is a good thing. We are finally having discussions about the whole of the criminal justice system and asking ourselves, is it working? Is it fair and is it just? As a police officer and as the chief of police, I'm looking forward to meaningful positive change that works for all people in our community. Due to unfunded mandates and the underfunding of mental health treatment in this country, police officers have been forced to fill roles. They were not originally trained to perform or in many cases suited for. The creation of our radar navigator program is a great start, but it's not a magic fix. We need real sustainable funding for homelessness, drug addiction, and those suffering from mental health crises. The police support these kinds of changes and we will continue to provide the kind of service our community can be proud of. All right, I would like to begin my presentation by providing you and the public with information on how monies are budgeted for the police department and utilized within the organization. If I may draw your attention to the left side of the slide, you will see a pie chart broken up into percentages. You will notice that the most significant percentage of the pie goes to personnel costs at 85%. This consists of salaries, benefits and deferred compensation and more. The next largest percentage goes to other at 8%. Other refers to interfund expenditures such as fleet, facilities, maintenance programs, licensing and insurance. Followed by detention at 4.7%. Detention includes jail billing and home detention costs. Operating supplies come in at 1.4%. Operating supplies consists of paper pens, ticket books, PPEs, ammunition, tools and equipment. Followed by professional services at 0.5%. Professional services consist of towing, polygraph examination, psychological examinations, translation services, pet licensing, sheltering, biohaz, remediation and chaplains. And last, in the smallest portion of our budget is training at 0.4% of our operating budget. Training consists of, but not limited to, crisis intervention team, bias-based policing, domestic violence updates, de-escalation, legal updates, first aid, CPR, AED, emergency vehicle operation, interviewing techniques, homicide investigation and so on. On the right side of the slide, you'll see another pie chart. This pie chart depicts how the monies are divided amongst the four divisions within the organization. The first division of the department that I would like to address is also the largest at 53.1%. And that's the operations division. The operations division is the most visible of the divisions in the department in that it is uniformed patrol officers. Operations is responsible for responding to emergency and non-emergency calls 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The Bothell Police Department on average responds to approximately 29,000 incidents per year resulting in excess of 23 hour, 23,000 hours spent on said calls. Operations currently consists of two captains. One captain is responsible for personnel assigned to days while the other is responsible to those assigned to nights. The two swing shifts are split between the two captains. There are six sergeants. One sergeant is assigned to each shift. So we have two day shift squads, two swing shift squads and two night shift squads for those six sergeants. We also have four master police officers assigned to operations. One is assigned each day and each grave shift. Day shift typically has seven officers assigned to it. Night shift typically has six officers assigned to it. Minimum staffing for both of these shifts is one sergeant and four officers. And that is typically how many officers are working due to vacations, illnesses, holidays and so on. Swings currently has two officers assigned to one shift and one assigned to the other. Lastly, we have one administrative assistant assigned to operations. The support services division is responsible for 17.4% of our budget. Support services provides 911 communications as well as record support. We have one support service manager, the civilian equivalent of a captain who oversees both units. Our Bothell Communication Center is the primary P S A P or public safety answering point for all police, fire and medical calls coming from landlines and cell phones within the city limits of Bothell and Lake Forest Park. Any calls for fire or medical emergency are transferred to NORCOM. The communication center also delivers radio communication for officers from Bothell and Lake Forest Park Police Departments, including animal control and prisoner transports. Each shift operates with one telecommunicator is the primary call taker and another telecommunicator is the primary radio dispatcher. While the call taker is answering phones, the radio dispatcher is simultaneously providing the information from the call to a responding police unit. The communication center has 11 911 lines, six business lines, while also receiving text 911 messages and is staffed 24/7, 365 days a year. Some of the telecommunications communicators additional duties include non-emergency phone calls, data entry for property and warrants, coordinating law, local tow responses and data research for patrol officers. Our comm center also monitors security cameras and alarms for the PD as well as alarms and panic alarms for the police facility, municipal court and city hall. Our communication center has one supervisor and 11 telecommunications. Due to our deficit, I cut one supervisor position and two telecommunications positions this spring. Our records staff process and maintain all police reports, citations and arrest reports generated by the police department and forward case materials to prosecutors for filing. Since the city of Bothell is geographically located in two counties, these materials are provided to either King or Snoamish County prosecutors or the Bothell prosecutor depending on the type of case and the address of the incident. Public records requests or PRR for police-related records are handled by the public record specialist. Responses range from three-page collision reports to much larger projects that can require distribution of thousands of pages. PRRs are processed in accordance to state public records act and many requests require the redaction of certain information prior to release. Our records section also provides fingerprinting, concealed license, renewal and applications as well as drop-off locations for what's called the med project where people can drop off unneeded or expired medication for safe disposal. The investigations division is responsible for 14% of our budget. The investigations division's primary duty is to conduct secondary investigations for felony crimes. They also investigate child protective service referrals, adult protective service referrals, internet crimes against children, child pornography referrals and coordinate the registered sex offender notification and monitoring program. The investigations division includes a captain, two detective sergeants, seven detectives, a crime analysis detective, an administrative assistant, a school resource officer assigned to Bothell High School and a campus liaison officer assigned to UW-Bothell Cascadia. On the slide, you will notice that we cut the administrative assistant position from the investigations division. Again, this was due to our deficit. This is the last of the divisions, the administrative division, which is responsible for 15.5% of our budget. The administrative division is responsible for day-to-day operations and practices of the Bothell Police Department. The administrative division provides oversight, direction and support to our divisions and units to ensure that our agency is following policies and best practices as set by WASPAC accreditation standards. Further, it is the responsibility of the administrative division, specifically me, the chief, to ensure that we are hiring the best candidates, that we hold ourselves to our oath of office, code of conduct and our agency's core values. The administrative divisions consists of the chief, deputy chief, administrative support manager and administrative assistant. Also assigned to the administrative division is risk management. The risk management division is led by one captain who is responsible for professional standards, training, animal control, police support officers, evidence, narcotics canine, traffic and the radar navigator manager. The professional standards unit provides specialized and critical services to help support the department's mission and to ensure effective operation within the police department. The professional standards unit helps ensure that accountability and transparency are maintained, holding officers accountable to their oath, code of conduct, core values and policies. Professional standards is responsible for organizing entry and lateral level testing, internal investigations, background investigations, use of force review and audit, complaint review and audit, as well as a number of other audits and reviews required by WASPAC for state accreditation. Currently, one sergeant and one administrative assistant are assigned to professional standards. The training unit is responsible for creating, coordinating, scheduling and documenting all department training. The training unit is also tasked with ensuring we are meeting the requirements set by the state and the WASPAC accreditation standards. Our trainings include implicit bias, crisis intervention training, de-escalation training, defensive tactics, first aid, CPR, AED, legal updates, to name a few. The training unit is staffed with one sergeant and one training officer. At times, there have been up to 10 student officers assigned to training. The police support officers are responsible for coordination, care, custody and transport of suspects and subjects from the police department to and from four local jails we contract with as well as to the court. The PSOs also assist with patrol as needed for prisoner transport. On the slide, you will notice that we cut one police support officer position. This too was due to our deficit. Traffic.
Yes. Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Um, as I think I'm hearing you say ADD and as a teacher, I'm thinking of, you know, something that I don't think is part of an active part of police. What are you, are you saying ADD?
No, AED.
Oh, AED.
Like, like as in a diffusor later.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
No, no. So again, we, we cut one of the police support officers. The traffic unit's primary responsibility is responding to collisions, providing emphasis patrols in school zones, traffic complaint areas and areas that have high collision rates. They also handle technical collision investigation, traffic control, DUI enforcement, traffic safety education and special event management such as the Fourth of July. Currently, our traffic officer and traffic sergeant, we have one traffic officer and one traffic sergeant assigned to motor officer positions and one assigned to a vehicle. Traffic officers as well as patrol officers take an education approach when dealing with most traffic violations. Because of this, only 35% of our traffic stops result in an infraction being issued. That's based on 2019 numbers. We implemented our own animal control program a number of years ago in an effort to provide better service, visibility and availability to our community. Our one animal control officer handles vicious animal complaints, animal bites, disruptive animals, injured animals, animal cruelty calls and a number of other animal related calls. Our animal control officer has worked with volunteer groups to assist with door billing regarding pet licensing has become a tremendous resource for our community. The evidence and property unit manages all, manages all evidence related to criminal investigations, found property, items held for safekeeping purposes. This involves the intake, storage, security, release and disposal of items. Bothell PD has two full-time evidence property room coordinators. The radar program or response awareness de-escalation referral program is a collaboration between the police departments of Shoreline, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, Kirkland and Bothell. The program improves outcomes for people with behavioral health conditions and reduces the reliance, reliance on crisis systems. Mental health professional navigators respond in the field with law enforcement to directly address people's behavioral health needs and make referrals to community-based care. By connecting people with care, navigators free law enforcement officers to focus on their primary life and safety responsibilities. The radar program is 100% funded through MID, which is a grant, through King County wide sales tax of 0.1%. Due to COVID-19 and the state of the economy, it is anticipated that our grant funding for this program will be significantly impacted. Currently, we have one radar manager and three navigators. This does not include the navigator we budgeted for through the public safety levy. We're not planning to fill that position until we have an idea of where our funding is going to be for radar. Well, we have quite a few accomplishments. We kind of narrowed it down to these. The first and foremost is levy implementation. That was a heavy lift by everybody that I think that was here and was involved with that. And we're super proud of A) that it passed and B) that it, we've managed to get our people on board so quickly. So we've hired 13 police officers, an evidence property room coordinator, a police support officer and a civilian crime analyst. The police support officer position that I listed there, one of those three was cut however. We implemented a swing shift for better patrol coverage and response during the busiest times of days, which was something that we promised during the levy. We formalized and expanded the radar navigator program. We implemented an ILA and obtained MID funding to hire radar program manager and two navigators. A third navigator position is funded through WASPAC grant. We continue to train our officers in crisis intervention. Most of our officers attend the 40-hour course with the remainder having attended the eight-hour course. We also sent a sergeant and MPO to the CIT International Conference in Seattle last year. One of the heavier lifts that we're dealing with right now is the I-940 House Bill 1064 training. I attended a number of I-940 House Bill 1064 update committee meetings through the fall of 2019. As most of you are probably well aware, House Bill 1064 recited to law and became Washington Administrative Code 13911020. I'm sure you have that written down somewhere that requires law enforcement officers to obtain violence, de-escalation and mental health training so that officers have greater skills to resolve conflict without the use of physical or deadly force. In effective December 7th, 2019, all new general authority peace officers must complete a minimum of 200 hours of initial violence, de-escalation and mental health training at the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. Violence, de-escalation and mental health training will also include the following. Patrol tactics and methods of de-escalation, managing distance between officer and subject, utilizing shielding to protect the officer and the person involved, managing the pace of the interaction, engaging in communication to increase options for resolving the incident, recognizing and managing the impact of stress on the officer's perceptions and reactions, understanding emotional intelligence and self-awareness, understanding the foundational principles of procedural justice to build trust and rapport, recognizing and mitigating the impact of implicit and explicit bias on the officer's perceptions and reactions, recognizing behavioral health issues, use of techniques and communication strategies to calm persons who appear to be agitated, proper use of non-lethal defensive tactics to gain physical control when necessary, alternatives to physical or deadly force as part of the decision-making process, learning about the historical intersection of race and policing, understanding the experience of Black Americans to include the institution of slavery, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, mass incarceration, the role and impact of police in schools, strategies to reconcile past injustices. There is much more, but these are the highlights that I've chosen. To ensure that our agency continues to take a leadership role in this, I assigned a sergeant to officers to become instructors in this course. They will be teaching at our department and possibly throughout the state. I've talked a lot about community policing and it's been a topic of conversation at city council probably at the past two meetings I've been at. Community policing is more than just something we do. It's woven into the fabric of the Bothell Police Department. It's our culture. It starts with our hiring and continues through our training and then is followed by our mentoring. Officers on their own and without supervisory input take time to play with kids on school grounds and in neighborhoods. They read books to children at the library and local grade schools. They organize food drives for local food banks. They participate in shop with the cop programs during the holidays. They ring bells for the Salvation Army. They organize squad competitions. They ring bells for the Salvation Army. They organize squad competitions to see which squad can obtain the largest amount of school supplies to donate to students in need. They buy diapers for a child because a mom can't afford them. They do all these things because they're passionate about helping people who are marginalized, victimized, or just in need. COVID nineteen has also been a bit of a challenge, as I think everybody's well aware. It has impacted every division and unit within the police department to some degree or another, and quite frankly, the whole city and state. That being said, I've worked with my command staff and city executive leadership team to implement new best practices and policies, protect our employees, detainees, and the public. Early on, the city manager activated the ECC. And because of that, we were able to get a logistics team up and running very quickly and able to get all the supplies necessary for our first responders. Though we've had a few exposures, we have yet to have an employee test positive for COVID nineteen. Lastly, is our WASPIC re-accreditation, as stated previously in other reports to the council and community, the Bothell Police Department is a fully accredited agency through Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs. The Bothell Police Department is one of fifty-two WASPIC accredited agencies in Washington State. The purpose of the agency accreditation is to ensure that industry best practices and standards are being followed. These best practices and standards are then incorporated into our policies and procedures. With accreditation, we are required to maintain files and ensure that we're in compliance with all one hundred and thirty-seven WASPIC standards, and those files are reviewed every four years by WASPIC. Last spring, Bothell PD went through this process and was awarded re-accreditation. This is no small feat. Some of the major areas of review include use of force, records management, training, recruitment and selection, performance evaluations, code of conduct, internal affairs, evidence and property room control, just to name a few. So this, this is my first budget, so I had a, had a pretty steep learning curve, as Chris is probably well aware. In this particular one, you'll see our twenty, our twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two, move this, our twenty twenty-two budget. The actual budget from twenty twenty-one is, we go back over my notes here, is that we've only made a few minor changes. As you can see, the greatest increase in our, our budget is personnel costs at the very top. Those costs are directly related to step increases and other contractual obligations. Under maintenance and operation, those increases are due to contracts, goods, and licensing expenses. And under interfund services, the increases in interfund expenses have risen a little over a hundred thousand over our last budget. Interfund services expenses are dictated to us. In essence, it's just the cost of doing business. Is now a good time to pause? Anybody have any questions so far? All right.
Councilmember Doer.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yeah, sorry. My computer's slow, and so I hit the button twice and then remute myself. So you mentioned that the police department is being asked to do our, to, to take responsibility for things that they'd never previously been asked to do before. I wondered if you could maybe break that down a little bit more and explain what you mean by that.
Sure. I started in law enforcement thirty years ago. Thirty years ago, it was more law enforcement. That was our job. It has evolved over the past thirty years to be things, social work, because it's not funded. We, we don't have social workers readily available, so a lot of times we'll go into a house to de-escalate situations and give them resources as best we can. Things that just aren't being funded. Mental health issues are a constant challenge for us. We, we do our best to try to mitigate those situations. Mental health calls are an aid call. They're not law enforcement, okay? We're dealing with people that are in mental health crises, and they're not committing crimes. There's no intent there. And that's, that's a huge lift for us, just dealing with that. You know, there's civil, civil things that occur between neighbors. Oftentimes, those things could probably be sent to some sort of court system or mediator to resolve, but because those things aren't readily available, we end up going through there and trying to be mediators between neighbors over a property line, for example, or somebody parking in front of their house. So there, there's a number of things that we spend a lot of time on. Typically, I'll go back to mental health. It's not uncommon for us to, even with our Radar Program, to transport somebody to, so that they can receive aid at a local hospital. And they're out before we have even made our way back to finish the report. That's a huge problem, and it's not fair to the people that need those services. As police officers, it, it's frustrating. It's frustrating. You know, when, when you have somebody who needs to go to detox, but there's no beds available. It's frustrating when you have somebody who has a drug and alcohol addiction, drug or alcohol or both addiction, and there's no beds to send them to. I, I think that everybody who's been in the criminal justice system for any amount of time knows that jails are full of people that should be in mental health facilities and/or detox centers or drug alcohol centers. But that's the system we have. And it, I will tell you, it's frustrating. It's frustrating for a lot of police officers out there because we're trying to make a difference. We're trying to make change, but the system's broken. And it's completely unfunded.
Do you know if we have any flexibility within our Public Safety Levy to address some of these issues? I mean, I think that's come up a lot in recent weeks. People call it defunding the police. I think that's a misnomer. Because I agree, prevention is, is really important, and yet, like you said, it's not funded. I guess I was, so that's my first question. My second is, I, I was under the assumption that the navigator was doing the social work and getting people help. So I guess I'm wondering what are the gap is with the Navigator Program? Do we need more of them, or, or do we need some mental health counselor within the police department that does that specific job? I'm just looking for ways to address those issues that you're talking about.
So, so one of the challenges is when we're dealing with people in mental health crises, it's not just during business hours. So if you're looking to have somebody that's constantly able to respond, you have to staff for twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five. As it currently stands, the navigators have to respond with an officer out into the field anyways. And we stand by to ensure their safety and protection. So it's not a one or another. It's a team that goes out there and does that. Now, the follow-ups, those can happen in an office relatively easily, but you know, when you're looking at, you have three navigators currently being shared between five cities as part of the Radar Program. They're, they're stretched max, and what they're doing is mostly doing follow-ups, and they may come and do a ride-along with us once a week and go out there and make contacts. But a lot of their time is spent on follow-up. So it's somebody that we've taken to a hospital here locally, and they're, they're already out, and we're trying to get them plugged into that program. From that, that program is super successful. But it's not happening at that moment when we're going out there in the field. Does, does that help explain that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how, if, if there's some flexibility in the Public Safety Levy, how we can. I assume that there's a difference in pay scale between navigators and police. It sounds like navigators potentially could ease the burden on the police department, and maybe we could shift funding to that, and so I'm just looking for, I guess.
It's, I understand that that the levy is, it's, we already have one navigator position in the levy. So I think for public safety, I think monies could be moved around, but that's probably more of a question for Paul or the city manager. They're, they're more well-versed in that than me.
Okay.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
The Public Safety Levy, the voters approved the levy to maintain and enhance public safety. So it's within the discretion of the council to determine what public safety is. So when we, when we created the levy, we told the community that we were going to fund twenty-seven positions with the levy funds. Those, those positions were identified two, three years ago. So it's at the council's discretion to determine if the definition and how you would like to deliver public services has changed today, then you would have the ability to change those positions.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. My next question is concerning the school resource, resource officer and the campus liaison. Do they both carry guns?
Yes, they're, they're fully commissioned police officers.
Okay, so, because I guess my understanding with the school resource officer was that it, that person, that police officer would travel, and I believe we were thinking middle schools at the time, because we already had one at Bothell High, and they would be able to sort of identify emerging issues or problems, and I'm wondering now if that position, I understand that position's not filled, at least that's what I think I remember, and I'm wondering now if we would be better off, given the current atmosphere, providing mental health professionals. The, the legislature passed a bill, but it was to provide I think half-time mental health counselors at all schools, but the governor vetoed it because of the budget. So I think that's a gap that we might consider as a council to fulfill that need.
I'm sorry. I, I think the position you were thinking of is that SO SO Officer, the School Outreach and Safety Officer, is that the position that was through the levy that you were talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the position, our Liaison Officer at UW, I believe that one is fully funded through the UW and Cascadia. The SRO at Bothell High School, I believe, is funded at twenty-five percent. I'd have to, fifty percent, sorry, fifty percent. So that's our partnership with the school district. I was the SR, I was the SRO at Bothell High School back in ninety-six. I mean, and then ran the SRO program. So I'm, I'm a, I'm a fan of it. You've spent a lot of time developing relationships. There's good programs and there's bad programs out there. I think that the difference is, we actually assign somebody, they interview. It's a, it's a good, solid program up at Bothell High School. A lot of times, SROs from different county agency, let's say, it, it's on a rotation, so you kind of, it's a luck of the draw, and it's on overtime typically.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I don't, have we heard from the schools? If they're still interested, I mean, this is a constantly evolving, quickly evolving situation, and I'm wondering if the schools have weighed in at all in wanting to kind of change, or either with the campus or with the, the high school or middle schools, what that relationship looks like, or what that officer's role is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure like anybody else, they're evaluating things. They haven't reached out to us on anything recently. I know that there's some meetings planned in the future, and we'll probably get some additional information, and then we can make some adjustments from there.
Councilmember Doer, I'll be meeting with the school superintendent in early July to discuss this topic.
Perfect. Okay, so I just wanted to throw that out there for the rest of council, that maybe we can start maybe just mulling, because I know we have till July seventh really to think about things. If we wanted to make adjustments in, in addressing maybe some of the mental health and social work needs that the, the, the current department doesn't really have the resources to deal with. I think that's all. Oh, I did have one more question, and you can email me. I was just curious in our, within our department, how many women we have and how many minority officers we have in our department? That would be really helpful.
Can you hand me that? That is a great question. So, as I was the former risk management sergeant, and I worked with Chief Cummings at the time, and so we were really working on, working on diversity within our organization. So in the last, I'm gonna say twenty months, one, two, three, four, five, six, we've hired seven women in the past twenty months. We've hired one, two, three, four people of color.
And I, I assume we had women and people of color prior to that, so this would be in addition.
Yeah.
I, I thought so. And that's, so yeah, if we could have, if I could have the total numbers and then, you know, the total force, that would be helpful, just to be able to answer questions as people ask them. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate your time.
Great question. Thank you. All right. Any more questions, and I'll start right back up.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And I really appreciate your input, Chief. I think your officers are doing a lot of community policing, a lot of policing, but also I appreciate where they are helping with the kind of people that are marginalized and victimized. And so my question is, what percentage do you think of those calls is the police department getting?
Of, of like mental health calls?
Yes.
You know, I don't have that number, and I, I would hate to speculate. It, it's a lot. And that's based on, I feel, just the amount of time we spend on these things. I'd have to actually do some research and get back with you on the number of mental health calls that we respond to.
Because I, I think that's where, when we look at our safety levy, we need to say, how do we best address those calls? And is it the police department's responsibility, or is there another agency, such as social workers or somebody else that should be addressing that, right?
Okay, that, I'm not a politician, and I'm a first-time chief, so disclaimer. So one of the challenges is that this is much bigger than just us. So we can have a navigator in place or, or some sort of social service. But where, where are we going to take them? Where's the facility? Where's the bed? Where's the doctor? That's going to allow them to be there, and I think that's where you're talking more from a state, federal standpoint. Because otherwise, I think for a local municipality, that's a pretty steep climb. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right, thank you. So, given that I know what the state has been doing over all these years, I don't think we can depend upon them. I think we have to find locally resources, maybe in different cities and join together, that we can actually do something, because the state has not done anything over all these years. And if we wait for them, these people will not have any services. So I think we have to try and work with our neighboring cities in our region and see if we can't figure this out.
I'll support you. All right. Any other questions before I move on?
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your well-thought-out presentation and your passion when it came to community policing. I did notice that, that you had some, some passion there, and it meant a lot to you, so I thank you for that. It means a lot just to see you that passionate about the community policing piece. I had a couple of questions around the traffic stops turned to prosecution. I didn't catch what you had said about how many traffic stops turn into prosecution and/or go further. Was there a percentage that you said, or a?
Yeah, what, what I was talking about, I was just talking about basic infractions, which would probably be much more than traffic stops that turn into incarcerations. But we, only thirty-five percent of our traffic stops But we, only 35% of our traffic stops turn into infractions. We really, we really try to focus on, I call it the ambassador program of educate people, remind them to slow down, remind them to look both ways. I think most of the time that works best. I think most of us have probably at some point or another had a bad experience with a police officer, probably on a traffic stop. So we take that very serious. We're not perfect by any stretch, but that's something that I'm pretty passionate about. We don't use it as a source of funding or anything like that. It's kind of a last resort. If somebody's, quite frankly, just doesn't get it, then it's, okay, well then you're going to get a ticket.
Good, thank you. You, you said that you're, we're going to have a tough time with the funding for the navigator program because of the COVID-19. Is that because you're hearing something that funding from King County, Mid will be drying up? Is that something that we as council members should make sure that we're paying close attention to? And I'm talking to our representatives at the county level?
Yeah, absolutely. I received a letter from Mid that pretty much was axing $500,000 from our $700,000 grant due to COVID-19. I'm no economist, I'm not Chris, but that's a lot of money out of the main budget. And we've been in touch with Councilmember Dombowski and Lambert down there. I think they're both really working hard to ensure that we get more than what's left or what they're saying that we're going to get. But any assistance on that would be great. This is a great program and it's one of the best ones in the state that I'm aware of. I'm glad we're on the ground floor with it. Quite frankly, we've been taking the show out on the road, trying to get other cities to start a program and because it works. And to get this far into it and then lose funding is, it's a challenge. You know, I've got to figure out a way to keep the program going.
Okay, well, yeah, let's definitely keep that conversation going. We hear a lot about that program regionally through SCA, Sound Cities Association. Other cities are looking at that program and wanting to adopt something similar within their communities. So let's keep that conversation going so we don't lose the funding because that, I mean, that is what the program is designed for is to help people. And having a COVID, you know, the pandemic with the COVID is not a reason to stop funding on a human services or a public, you know, public need. So have, what can you tell me, back many, many years ago, there was a thing called CSO, Community Service Officer. I know Seattle had different precincts or different beats that had CSOs. Do we have, have we ever had a CSO in Bothell?
No. Not since.
And would, would a community service officer be the type of officer that can handle some of those non felony, more engaging with the youth and things like that? Businesses, would community service officers, I'm trying to remember how they used them in the past, but it seemed like those types of officers were out and about and were bridging that relationship quite often, from what I remember as a kid.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of benefits with a program like that. But the one thing I don't want to lose that I think is part of our secret sauce, for lack of a better description here, Bothell, is that the officers are actually out there engaging with the community and developing the relationships. And I, I don't want to lose that. I think there are things that we can do to have some sort of position that may handle, I'll call it the civil issues. Yeah, there's programs out there and I'd have to research it. But the thing I don't want to have happen is I don't want to have another layer between my men and women, police department and the community we serve. We have enough barriers. And what I want to see is I want to see officers out of the car more. I want to see officers walking around downtown more and on bikes and at the parks and those kind of things to develop the relationships. And that's, that's the important part for me. And where I'd like to see is, you know, continue on this community oriented policing that a bit. It's being involved, but you know, having additional resources that, that help people in those non criminal things. Yeah, I think that's worth looking into.
Great. And I agree with you already. I think the humanizing factor of having the police out and engaging with the community, especially youth, over longer periods of time and kids growing up, getting used to seeing police officers on a regular basis, getting to know them, them getting to know each other, it humanizes it both ways. So I think that that would have a huge impact on us. Councilmember Dorr spoke about resource officers in schools. If we, if we have resource officers in school or a police officer in a school, are they, are they able to handle hate crimes? And things like that that would happen in a school?
Oh, absolutely. Your commissioned police officer, they're just on a little tiny little beat. And that's, that's the footprint of the school. They absolutely can handle, handle any sort of hate crime that's going on up at the school.
Okay, and has, since you've been, since we've had that officer at Bothell High School, has there been any time in which that resource officer has engaged in hate crime at Bothell?
Where somebody's reported it to them and they took a case? I'm not aware of any. I know that we, I can't remember the last hate crime that we had here. I want to say it's been years that it's been reported. I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but that it's been reported. But I can get that information for you. That's something that would, that's something that probably would have landed on my desk at some point or another in risk management. And I don't ever remember dealing with something like that. That would stand out.
Okay, well, it's, it's good to have that conversation. I'd love to sit down and chat with you and ensure that, you know, kids within our school systems are feeling safe. And oftentimes when things like that happen, we don't report them. We say nothing. We brush it under the rug. So I think it's good to start having that conversation, ensuring that kids feel safe. Thank you. And then the last, the last deal I have is you had said that we, the amount of hiring that you've done of women and people of color and the fact that we have a very diverse department already. I think that's something to be celebrated. We talk about the celebration of our inclusion on our wall, our glass wall at City Hall. I think it's important that we celebrate how diverse our city actually is. How many leaders we have within our community of women, people of color. Not only just, you know, the council, we're a pretty diverse council, but the people that work within the city, the people that work within our school district, the people that work just all around. So if we could celebrate that and just, and talk to that a little bit about what you're doing within your department, fire department, I think would be amazing for our community to see how diverse we truly are and the steps that we're taking. Would probably go a long way for the way the community looks at our departments.
Well, I know we've made progress. I will tell you, in my opinion, we have a long way to go. We need to do a better job on recruitment and figuring out how to get out into our communities and, and improve diversity in the organization. It's, it's good for the organization, you know, it's, but it is a challenge. I'm not going to lie.
Well, keep up the good work. I know it's tough, but just keep doing what you're doing. That's what we, we need good people like you doing.
Thank you, sir.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, a couple of things. I guess initially it's a couple of comments and then a favor to ask. Some crimes that we just don't think about because they're quiet and they're hidden behind closed doors. You know, the child abuse or elder abuse, child pornography. And it just struck me that, because I've met some of our officers and they're fantastic people. And they're very attuned to and engaged with people as they interact with them. And it occurred to me that as you encourage them to be engaged with the community, their radar probably, they're developing relationships. I'm just, you know, assuming, but they're developing relationships. So some of those more hidden horrible crimes that we don't see behind closed doors, they see red flags. I would get, I would guess that that's one of the perks to being involved with the community.
I will say, as a former school resource officer, those relationships there at those schools, for me, were huge. You'd end up having conversations where a student would actually get to a point where they're comfortable talking to you about the problems at home. And I mean, it's tough as a school resource officer sometimes to hear the stories and then try to figure out how you're going to help them because sometimes it's not criminal. Sometimes, sometimes it's just a horrible situation. And, and that's, that's important though. That's why I'm a big fan of the school resource officer program and why it's important for us to continue to build relationships in the community. You never know who, whose life you're going to change or who is going to say, you know what, I trust this officer, I'm going to go talk to him. That they wouldn't normally report. So, but that's all based on relationship building.
I hope parents of students appreciate, appreciate the significant role that a resource officer plays for the kids at large. Also, I, well, that's another rabbit trail. I did want to say that Councilmember McAuliffe's comment about mental health and grouping, and working with other cities, keenly important. And I, you know, I'm fully in favor of that, but I also think we need to keep Olympia's feet to the fire because there's been a lot of abdication of, of giving the support that our officers and our community needs and individuals who are desperate for needing help are just floundering. And if we're compassionate at all on a state level and, and if we can work with local cities, we ought to be more proactive instead of always depending on somebody else to fix it. So I just wanted to add my two bits on that. Here's my request in favor, as I see budget requests are coming up. So we know that they love canines. Could you speak to what that expansion would mean to you when you go through the budget request, please? And that's it.
Sure. We have a couple of things. We have some fundraising that would assist with our canine program. We have a narc, narcotics canine right now. We'd like to expand it to a tracking canine. Currently, we utilize tracking canines from a variety of our neighboring agencies. And it really kind of depends on if they're on duty or if they're already on a call. It's kind of hit and miss, hit and miss at best. Having a tracking canine is super helpful. It's helpful to find lost children. It's helpful to find felony suspects who flee the scene of an assault, of a burglary, things like that. It's, they're super helpful. So we're looking at about $38,000. That gets the dog, the handler kind of set up. We'd have, that doesn't include a car. We could probably equip a car through some fundraising. But I'm probably a year out, you know, before we're ready for that. I have some officers kind of setting up the fundraising thing. There, there's a lot of plans that need to be put in place before that can happen.
Right. Well, quick question. I would assume having a canine there that can help track, track, you know, both, you know, kids or a senior with dementia or, or somebody who's trying to ditch you. I would think that would be part of de-escalating a very intense, maybe I'm making an assumption, but if an officer isn't having to do, have the adrenaline to go pursue something and the canine's doing that, I think that would, I would, I would suspect that that would be a piece of de-escalating a situation that could be very emotionally intense.
Yeah.
Is that a leap?
Might be. It kind of, it kind of, it kind of depends on what side of the dog you're on, I guess, if it's de-escalation or not. So the idea is though, you utilize a canine to protect, you don't want to put an officer's life in risk, you know, when you don't have to. That's what the dog's there for. And I don't want to lose sight on that, that, you know, actual tracking that ends in bites are pretty small because most people give up relatively quickly. For us, it's, it's the tracking process, being able to get up there, have a dog onsite faster. The faster you get a canine onsite, the better your chance of actually catching the person that committed the crime. So does that help?
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
All right. Should I, should I move on?
Well, hold on one second. Councilmember Agnew.
Okay, mine will be sweet and short. Thanks for the presentation so far. And you know, you were talking about interfacing with the citizens. I remember Snowmageddon. If I'm not mistaken, there was a YouTube video of a captain in the Bothell Police sledding down a hill with a bunch of kids.
Yeah.
I love that. And I think of that all the time. But the one serious question I have is, in this budget request, do you have any officers that are going to retire and are their positions frozen?
Yes, and I'm going to get to that. And you'll, you'll see that. Is that, can I just kind of get to it in a little bit?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're going to have retirements. We, we're constantly, it's like fire. You know, there's constant attrition. It just seems like you're never, ever catching up. We're in a much better place than we were than 24 months ago. But I can think of at least one more probably this fall that'll retire. It's on my radar. And then, of course, you also have to factor in not everybody makes it through field training and probation. So I think we do a really good job, exceptional job, getting the right people here. Most people make it through. I think our failure rate's probably in the 10 to 15% range, which is really low.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, one more. Councilmember Thompson.
Talking, so if I get muted, you can hear me.
Okay, I can hear you.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you, Chief. Sorry, there's a Comcast outage at my house, so I've missed a little bit, but I'm back on the phone.
All right.
And so my apologies if these questions have already been asked. You know, I would love, and I know this is the really high level presentation and that's what we've got, but I would love to see an accounting of like what exactly we spend our time on, especially in operations. That's a pretty broad category. And I know, I don't expect you to have this tonight, but I would love to see some specifics around like specifically what we are doing. Is that something that like reasonably available? You're not going to have to reinvent the wheel for?
No, we can, we can get this for you.
Okay, great. I also wanted to know what, do you know roughly what percentage of our calls are non criminal in nature?
I do not.
Okay. Like I'm curious how much we, time we spend on not law enforcement. And I would love to know that like within that non criminal in nature, like what categories, if any, make up a substantial percentage of those calls?
Yep. I can get that for you.
Okay, great. Do we know roughly what percentage of our calls are violent crimes?
We don't have a whole lot of violent crime. I say that we had a stabbing up on Norway Hill, I think it was last weekend, between a, I think it was a 17 year old and a 15 year old, or 15 year old, 17. And I want to say maybe another stabbing six months prior to that. But we do not have a lot of violent crime when you're thinking of like the muggings, shootings and things like that. We are really, really low, low percentages.
Good. I mean, that's fantastic. You mentioned also that the radar navigator, those, those folks are pretty stretched, correct?
Yeah, so there's been a couple of challenges with that program. First and foremost has been COVID because that stalled our hiring this spring. And by the time we were getting ready to start our, our hiring again, that's when we get the letter from Mid saying, hey, you're going to, we're going to take $500,000 out of your budget. So it's, it's been a challenge, but we have two, two navigators through Mid and one through WASPIC. it, it's, it's been a challenge, but we have two, two navigators through mid and one through WASPIC that we utilize right now.
Got it. Um, it's really good to hear that like our violent crime rate is so low. It seems like we have a, if anything, an unmet demand for more mental health services, however. Um, would you say that's accurate?
I'm sorry, unmet demand? I, I think the demand is high.
There, there are, there are more people in need of mental health services than we are able to provide.
Yes.
Okay. Um, that's good. Um, I would generally just, um, kind of agree with Councilmember Dewar that, you know, focusing some of those levy funds if possible on prevention and, um, mental health to take some of the, some of the burden that you said, uh, essentially this isn't what we were designed to do. Um, you know, if, if we can support the people in our community that, that need mental health care, I, I am all for that. Um, and another question, um, this budget in front of us, does it include, um, ancillary costs to law enforcement, like um, paying for jail or public defenders, uh, something like that?
Yes. So, um, in the, um, I'm going to, I'm going to go back a few slides. Or you can, you're on the phone, so you can't see this, but, uh, if we, let me go back, um.
You can go back all the slides you want.
Yeah. Um, let's see here. Was it, was it eight percent?
Actually.
For jail, eight, eight, eight percent, eight percent of our cost has to do with, uh, incarceration costs and/or home detention.
Okay. Fantastic. Um, so this, this budget really is a summary of all the law enforcement costs, um, maybe except for the court.
Yeah, the, the court, courts, yeah, that's their own budget. But when, when the court sends somebody to jail, then that comes out of, uh, out of our budget.
Got it. Um, oh, one other, actually no, I, I don't think that's a good question because you already answered it close. So I think I'm done. Thank you, Chief.
No, you're welcome.
All right, Chief.
Uh, Chief, can I make, can I make one point of clarification? So, uh, Councilmember Thompson asked about mental health services and, and that there wasn't adequate mental health services in the city. So we don't provide any mental health services. The, the navigator is intended to, um, provide, the navigator is to navigate the system to connect people with mental health services. So traditionally, cities don't provide social services and, and mental health kinds of services. That's generally done at the, at the county level, or with the health district, or through nonprofits. So it would be a very interesting shift to look at, um, the city, uh, delivering a different level of service. So just want to be clear for anyone watching, that it's not that we're providing inadequate services. It's an arena that the cities never entered. Most local governments don't. And so this would be a shift in how we do business. I think certainly worth the conversation, but I just wanted to be clear that it's, 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 um, it's not something that we're not appropriately funding or providing. It's that we haven't entered that arena.
And if I may, when we, when we have somebody that we're trying to, um, take somewhere, uh, for assistance, it's our local hospitals. And it is, uh, it's triage. You know, they're, they're in the same position as everybody else. They're, they don't have enough resources, um, and that, that has a lot to do honestly with them typically releasing the person before we're back here writing our report. So that, that's what I meant by, uh, no, there's just not enough resources, not locally, just in general with the system. Should I move on? All right. So let me go back to my slide. All right. So I think I left off, uh, vehicle storage, if I may. Uh, that, that's probably sticker shock to a number of people that are looking at this. Uh, that number is based on, uh, well, here's the problem. The problem is this, we have a lot of cars that are in some state of either impound or seizure. Uh, impound for search warrants or seizure because of crimes that have been committed. And, or evidence for that matter. So at any given time in our back parking lot of the police department, we have between ten and twenty vehicles that are in some state of process, uh, in the system. In addition to that, we have about twenty-two vehicles, um, at the old city shop that are, that are locked up and in storage down there. And that property is going away to a degree. So we don't know if we're going to be able to maybe change the footprint and DOT is going to help us with a, a, a building down there. Or it's going to be gone and we got to start from scratch. But it's one of those things, I just want to throw it out there. Uh, because of state law changing, you know, we used to be able to search incident to arrest. That's not lo, no longer the case. So now everything results in a search warrant. So we have to bring the car back here and depending on caseload, it may happen the next day, may happen two days from now. Um, and if it's a busy, nice, beautiful weekend, um, I can normally come in here on a Monday and our back parking lot is full of cars. So, um, it's a high number. We, we've got some options out there, but I, more or less, I just wanted to throw it out there. This is kind of what the ballpark figure is for storing vehicles involved with law enforcement. Um, and we're not the only agency facing the same issue. Um, some of them have their own parking garages and it, it, they don't have a problem. We don't have that luxury. Um, the TAC house, uh, training panels, that is a ballistic, um, wall, more or less, that you can take out to the range. You can send it up, uh, you can use it for, um, scenario-based training. So it's a more fluid, not a static range when we're training people out at the range. Um, so it's all ballistic, super safe. Um, again, that's kind of a, a, a long-term goal. Talked about canine. The Graykey password software. So Graykey is a, a program that our detectives would utilize. It's to download data from suspects' phones. Uh, it aids investigators in solving a variety of crimes from burglary to crimes against children. Uh, the next one up there, and tell me to slow down if you want, but I, I just kind of want to get to this. I know we have other people and I want everybody to be here till eleven. Um, drones, uh, and unmanned aerial systems or UAVs. Um, these are a game changer for first responders, whether it's police or fire. Um, being able to, uh, when you have a crime, being able to put a, a drone up in the air on station that gives you situational awareness is huge. Um, it's, uh, it adds a safety measure. It's great for emergency management when you've got floods or snow. You want to figure out what roads are passable. You can send up a drone and fly a pattern and be back in minutes when it would take, you know, a car or somebody driving around a lot longer to get back to the PD. If we lost a bridge in an earthquake, we could send a drone across and be able to assess damage on the other side of the slip. Uh, bridges and roadways, anybody that's, it would, it would be a challenge if we had a really big earthquake here. And those things could be real lifesavers. Uh, license plate reader. I know I submitted this last year when Carol was the chief. Uh, I think it got cut early, but I'll throw it out there again. It has to do with parking enforcement. Uh, case law has changed. Uh, we can't mark tires with chalk or anything like that anymore. It's a seizure if I, if I touch the car. So license plate readers, geotag locations, as the, uh, parking enforcement officer or officers driving around, when they come back to the area, it notifies the officer that this vehicle's been there and it should have been moved. Um, and then we can go ahead and issue an infraction if it's necessary. Uh, Cellubrite is another software program. Uh, it's again used by detectives to, uh, it's either voluntary or through a search warrant to download data from electronic devices such as cell phones and tablets. Uh, the software has been used around the world in crimes against children, human trafficking, and other felony cases. Uh, standing desks and furnishings. Um, this one I'm kind of passionate about because, um, I think the desk that I'm currently standing at was Mark Eric's desk back in the old PD down in the valley. And, uh, I don't have it on blocks, but it probably should be, so I have legroom. Uh, but we have a, a lot of furniture here in the PD that is probably thirty years old, if not twenty years old, that's built in. And a lot of things have changed the past twenty, thirty years. So everybody, sit-stand desks are, are good for employees. It's good for their back. Um, I think most people know that police officers normally have back issues because of the belt that we wear, so that, that would be helpful. A smart board is a really large touchscreen television, for lack of a better explanation. Uh, we use that for situational awareness. Uh, we use it for information sharing from our, uh, crime analysis. There's lots of real positive things with that. Thermal imaging, uh, thermal imaging, uh, helps us when we can't see in the dark. It helps us find, uh, people that are hiding in bushes or in areas that under normal circumstances with just a flashlight, you just wouldn't see. Here are the, uh, the budget reductions, uh, that you mentioned earlier. So currently vacancies through attrition consists of eight officers and one sergeant. Due to COVID nineteen and the unexpected impacts that we've had with that, hiring and training, um, has been a problem. Uh, and it's going to continue to be a problem probably into twenty-twenty-one, um, is with the academy and whatnot. Uh, challenges with recruitment, oral boards, i- it's, it's challenging because how we onboard people here works, and I don't want to deviate from that a whole lot. And, and having those in-person conversations, I think is key to our success. We have them do ride-alongs and we can't do those things right now. And I'd rather, I'd rather slow things down than hire the wrong people. You hire the wrong people, you end up on the front page of the Seattle Times, or you end up in King Five News. I, I'm, I'm, I don't want to do that. Um, another issue is the State Academy has made a number of adjustments to their scheduling curriculum, which has negatively impacted us. Most significantly is the issue that the State Academy arbitrarily cut training for firearms, first aid, CPR, and defensive tactics for people that are at the academy in Belia right now. These trainings are a heavy lift for us because they're not budgeted for. Uh, further, many of our, our instructors are field, uh, training officers who will have students assigned to them, making it even more challenging to train. Currently, uh, we have seven officers in field training right now. Now, that's the bad side. The positive side, um, I guess, or a side benefit, is that we expect uh, our expense reduction for twenty-twenty-one to be one million four hundred and twenty-three thousand and ninety-one dollars and one million one hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars for twenty-twenty-two. In addition to those, we have one administrative assistant position which we froze and will remain frozen through twenty-twenty-two. The savings are up there on the slide, a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and twenty thousand, or a hundred and nine, five hundred and twenty dollars for twenty-one, twenty-two is seventy-two, six eighty-four. Uh, the cutting of the telecommunications supervisor position saves us a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and eight dollars for both twenty-one and twenty-two. And then the two telecommunications specialist positions that we froze, uh, two hundred and eighteen, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars for twenty-one, and a hundred and eighty-nine thousand seventy-two for twenty-two. Now for opportunities, um, I think we have a lot. We have a lot going for us as a city. We have a lot going for us as a police department. Um, these are just a few of the things, um, that I thought I'd, uh, submit. Body cameras for officers, that's kind of a no-brainer, but it's a heavy lift financially. Um, and talking to some of my neighboring agencies, uh, you're talking probably four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get in the door with the cameras and probably about another two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in just, uh, management of the system, which would probably require two FTEs to just do redaction and whatnot for, uh, records requests. Then we have the expansion of the navigator program. Again, we've talked a lot about that. Big fan. I like it. Uh, a community academy. Uh, I like community academies. It's, it's talks about relationship building. I don't think most people understand what law enforcement is, except that they saw it on television on some evening show. These, uh, community academies kind of pull back the curtain, show people, hey, we're, we're just people with uniforms on and this is how we do business and this is why we do business. And I think it's really good for the community. Open house forums, meeting with HOAs, cop, coffee with the cop, um, cops and clergy, uh, all of those things, uh, we're looking forward to starting back up. Some of those are going to have to be post-COVID nineteen, um, but we want to increase our, our, our digital footprint and maybe have some online meetings and also bring on our community engagement coordinator, which we're, hopefully we'll have that filled by the end of summer. Um, I'm really hoping. Uh, dispatch option, um, I reached out to NORCOM and asked them to provide me with a bid for dispatch services. I think it's, um, it's good government. You know, you want to make sure you're getting the, the best bang for your buck with the understanding, sometimes it's just, not just the buck, sometimes it's the services. So we, we got to make sure that we, we are getting the best of what we need for our community. And then there was the red light enforcement cameras, which I'm sure will generate conversation. Uh, I'm looking at the intersection of two-twenty-eighth and five-two-seven for one and potentially one on, uh, Bothell Way and State Route five-two-two. Uh, those are the two intersections we seem to get the most complaints from of people blocking intersections, running red lights, um, and, and just complaints in general. Uh, people have asked, how come I don't put a, a motorcycle officer up there to just, just work it because it's too dangerous? It, there's really what it boils down to. Um, it's, uh, uh, put a motorcycle officer out there, they're going to get hit by a car. And it's just not worth it to me to have that. And to actually work an intersection like five-two-seven and two-twenty-eight is really complicated. Uh, you have a lot of lanes. Where are we going to put the officer? How are they going to get out in traffic quickly? And then you risk the chance of actually creating a collision by trying to stop the people that just ran the red light. So trying to find a balance there. And then school zone enforcement, that is one of those things that we know we have people speeding in school zones. We can't be everywhere. Uh, we want to slow them down. Our motor officers and patrol officers do a really good job, but it's hit and miss based on call load. Um, some of our neighboring agencies have incorporated those and they've seen, uh, a pretty decent reduction of, uh, speeders going through the area. And again, it's, it's quite frankly, making sure nobody gets hit in the school zone is really the goal, um, for, for the safety. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Chief, can you make down your presentation so that the council can see themselves on a larger screen?
I can sure try.
Thank you.
See themselves? I don't need to see me larger. Uh, first off, Debbie, um, City Manager, thank you for making the clarification on who would, who, who shoulders it would fall for, for, um, mental health. And that, and it, it's a very important clarification, but there's no reason why cities couldn't come together, talk to county health or, so thank you for that clarification. Um, and then the other question I have is, okay, I'm a, I have a love-hate relationship with school zone enforcement and red light. But having been T-boned once on five-two-seven, crossing on one-eighty-third and almost T-boned again, I would love red light, you know, red light enforcement cameras in a couple spots because knowing that you could be busted might get people's antenna to think about getting attention to what the lights are doing. Can these pay for themselves? That's my question.
You know, uh, I know somebody who worked in an agency that had them before. Um, here, here's the bottom line for me. It, it's not about the, for me, it's not about the revenue. It is about, um, solving the problem in the intersections. If I have an officer who's trying to make their way north on a code run, typically non-COVID, mind you, five-two-seven is, uh, Boffel Levert Highway is completely gridlocked. And a lot of times, anybody who's driven through that intersection during a normal time knows that the light turns red and there's three or four cars that then go through there right after that. So from a public safety standpoint, um, that is my goal. Um, I don't know, we, we'd have to do a study to figure out, you know, if it, if it's cost-effective. Um, and there's a lot of community outreach that would have to be done. I, I'm probably not doing a good job answering your question. I would imagine that they're probably at least revenue neutral, um, at least. Because they probably wouldn't put it up unless it was.
That, that helps. So, thank you. We know to ask more questions. Thanks.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, and my apology, I, I may have missed this when I was kind of back and forth and jumping back in. Around the impound vehicle storage, roughly how many spots do we need?
Well, what I was saying earlier is we have 22 currently in storage. I have another 10 to 20 on any given day of the week that are in my backlog. So today's numbers, with the amount of officers I currently have, 35 to 40 would be good for the next five years, probably.
Is this money, would this be renting spots from neighboring businesses? Would this be, like, what specifically would this be?
Yeah, the number that we pulled out is just kind of an average of what we're finding for cost per square foot for like a building out in the valley. Part of the challenge with this is it has to be fairly local. I can't, it's not like I can get a screaming deal and go and put it up to Marysville because then I'm running my officers up to Marysville to do the searches. So it has to be local. So does that, does that help answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely. No, so that's basically that million two is basically the cost to rent 40 parking spots for the year?
Right. And it has to be a secure location because some of these vehicles are still evidence in a crime. So, and we have to hold on to some of those for a long, one of them was over there. I think we've had it for 15 years. And we're probably going to hold it, it'll be here long after I retire, probably. And so that's kind of what you have to plan for.
Okay, great. And I have another question. We mentioned the empty positions. Does this budget assume that we will fill those positions?
The
Overall numbers you've presented us?
I can, so
No, no, those, those savings are not in there.
That's correct. So we had assumed that those positions would be filled. And in addition with the, with the parking storage, there are options. One of the things we wanted to do was just alert the council to this situation that it is something that is, that is, we've talked about it now for a couple of years. We brought it up during the levy. I mean, it was one of the items that didn't make it in the levy because we tried to reduce the cost of the levy. And, and just as a reminder, that list that the chief had on, none of those items are in the budget. There, there are things that he would like to have, but they're not included at this time.
Okay. City manager, actually, I've got you one other question. Obviously, we don't provide mental health services. Could we, do we have the flexibility to use levy money to buy levels of service at places that do provide mental health services? Or is that stretching the levy definition of public safety a little much?
No, we actually, I, I know you had a power outage, so we had that brief conversation while you were
Yeah.
in your, in your power outage. So just, just to repeat the conversation, it is, it is under the council's discretion to determine how to use those levy monies. So the levy was passed to maintain and enhance public safety services within the community of Bothell. And so at the time, we identified the 27 positions that we felt would meet the community's expectations and the definition of, of community safety, public safety at that time. If the council would like to redefine how to deliver public safety services, that's absolutely within your discretion.
Okay, so that's a very broad definition then. That's basically how we choose to define it? Okay. Oh, one other question for the chief. If we left those positions open to realize cost savings, obviously that would impact level of service. How much overtime would we end up having to pay for to make up for that? Like, would we, would we lose some of that cost savings because of overtime?
You know, it's a great question. I wish I had the answer for it. It's really what it boils down to is maintaining that minimum staffing. If we're able to maintain minimum staffing, then there isn't that, that overtime expense for shift replacement. The, the expenses do come in from the proactive side of it is the more officers you have doing search warrants, they have to come in like during day shift typically, they're make, to process. So there's, there's budgetary issues with that as well. My plan is for, I was going to leave these in a state of being frozen through 2021. Primarily, it, it just worked to our advantage is I didn't, the academy is, is a challenge right now. So if at some point or another it's determined that we want to do something different, go in a different direction, then yeah, we can, we can evaluate and see what we can do with our staffing.
Sorry. All of those potential cost savings that you listed, those are not included in the number you gave us. So we would be able, if we do those, to take those off of the number.
Right. That, that's additional savings not included in my budget.
No, the, the administrative positions are, so when the chief went through the supervisor for dispatch, the two dispatchers, the administrative assistant, those are already included. Those were layoffs that occurred for 2020. The only ones that aren't are for the, the vacant positions for the police officers.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or should I leave?
Looks like everyone did it in their first round. So I just want to say that I'm interested in the red light cameras and the school zone cameras. Seeing, you know, you spoke about we'd have to do a study or dig into some additional information. And especially if it turns out to be neutral, revenue neutral, that it wouldn't cost us money. And we do get the additional incentives for people to obey the laws. I, I think that is definitely something to look into.
Right. It, it, and just for me, it has to be at least revenue neutral. One of the challenges though is in order for us to do that study, we kind of need to be in some sort of normalcy and non-COVID normalcy. So it may not happen really quick, so we'll just have to kind of keep an eye on things.
All right. Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I, I just want to agree with you wholeheartedly on the red light camera and the school zones, but I'd also like to bring up that I, I think we would need to seriously look on body cameras for the police officers also.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I added on the list. So thank you.
Councilmember Dewar?
Yeah, I would also agree with particularly the school zone red light cameras. We know that's a huge issue and it sounds like from what I'm reading that schools may end up widening the walk areas for students in order to socially distance the kids on the bus. So that's, you know, that's the origin of our safe streets and sidewalks levy was to address a lot of the sidewalks and parents can be really bad drivers when they're in a hurry to drop their kids off and rush to work. So I would completely agree with red light cameras at schools. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
All right. Well, let's take a break. But then, so we can queue up the judge to speak about the courts when we come back. So let's take a six-minute break, come back at 7:45. All right. Welcome back onto our next presentation with, on the court with Judge Rosano and Administrator Courtney White.
So hello, everyone. This is my first time making a presentation. It's also my first time to really talk to you all about what's happening in the court pretty much since you decided to make me your judge. So I'm pretty excited about it. We're going to go through the presentation. Hopefully you all can hear me. Just making sure I got nodding. Yes, good. We're going to start, let's go ahead and, and we're going to go, what does the court do? Well, as you all know, we resolve the misdemeanor and civil violations in the Bothell Municipal Code and also with the criminal matters in the U.D. of Washington that are committed within the boundaries of Bothell. I'm not going to read this to you. We have probation. The importance of our probation department is going to come up because it's the, it's the area where we think the community court is going to come from. And I know that that's very important to the council, so we're going to talk about that in a little bit, but you can see what our probation does. See our basic setup, myself, the administrator, and everybody that works at the court. We're pretty small as far as divisions have been made within the city. But I think we offer a lot. So on we go. Our accomplishments. We've done a lot of changes. And I want to say that I think the biggest thing that we have teamwork in the center and we have teamwork emphasized because I was really excited. I knew that I came into a situation where there had been kind of some division. There were issues that, you know, people weren't able to really communicate together. I was a little bit worried about it, but I'm also a talker, so I kind of figured I might be able to get past that. And we did. I was very excited. I came in, I sat down and I was like, oh, wow. Efficiencies, you know, the biggest thing from the, that I took away from that court study is efficiencies within the court. And it's one of those things I think where you're, you know, it's that the old story of the, how do you cook a frog? You know, you, you start heating the water and before they know it, they're, you know, they don't jump out. You toss them into hot water, they jump out. I think the court had been around for a long time and as it grew, things just kind of got chunked on together. And coming in as an outsider, being able to take a look at what was happening and being able to say, hey, there's a, there's a lot of wasted time and stuff going on here. Let's see what we can do. And then being able to have everybody come to the table. And I really appreciate, you know, Paul came in from City Attorney with a totally open mind, willing to work with us. Law enforcement came in, the chief was wonderful about, you know, getting people at the table himself and, and others there. And we really sat down and worked out an initial master calendar that addressed a lot of these kind of gaps in times and kind of made things flow a lot better. And I have to say, my hat's off to Courtney. I know she's here and I'm going to embarrass her by talking about her. But Courtney, working with our team of Heather, who's our coordinator, just sitting down and, and hammering out with all, all the information we gathered from all the groups and being able to put together that initial master calendar and being able to, to kind of accomplish all the needs of all the different stakeholders in that calendar. And just to kind of emphasize that COVID hits, we're, we're implementing, we're about to launch. And just to kind of emphasize that COVID hits, we're, we're implementing, we're about to launch all aspects of it and COVID. And, you know, dealing with that, addressing what happened there, I'm jumping around on here, but it's kind of how it flows in my brain. We got, Courtney and I were able to attend an online training or seminar that talked about virtual court. About doing court on Zoom. And so, you know, this is what I love. I said, gee, that'd be kind of interesting to do. And Courtney made it happen. And we were actually, I believe, the first court in the state of Washington to have a Zoom court up and running. Because when I say things like, gee, that'd be kind of nice, she does it. She's on it. She's organized. She figures out what needs to be done. And we started, we launched and we, we recorded with the administrative office of the courts that we were offering calendars on Zoom. Because you can't cut down a branch of government. You can't just stop a branch of government because there's a crisis. Citizens need to know that your government is functioning. So we got that going. We were able to go along on a modified schedule again. Worked out, we were able to very quickly, because everybody was working collaboratively, we, we were able to work out a, a new COVID. You know, system where we were, we were restricting the number of people that were here. We were still being able to handle those calendars. And now we're open again. I don't know if everybody knew this, but on June 15th, we started holding in-person. Court in, in compliance with the Washington State Supreme Court's directives. And so we have been doing, morning court has been virtual. And then afternoon court has been in-person. We've been limiting the number of people in. We have all kinds of safety measures up. Again, going to my team, they did a fantastic job of getting some plexiglass up in the courtroom. Getting the, the temperature taking, the questionnaire for people when they come in the court, they're coming through the screening process. We have, and I, I feel like I should turn the camera around because I am sitting in the courtroom right now. And we have like a chair every six feet and it's covered in plastic so that we can wipe it down after anybody's been in it. We have masks to hand out to people. We have all this stuff. And, and I want to also let you know that Courtney went after and was able to obtain. A lot of these items from the administrative office of the courts funding because they had special funding for COVID. And so we were able to minimize the cost to the city by going after that. But we're very excited. And I want to take a step back and kind of address virtual court. Um, this was kind of, you know, it was kind of scary for me. I'm kind of old and this whole video stuff is, is not really what I'm particularly good at. But when we got it up and running, the thing that struck me was we're having people show up. And I, and I'm going to step, take it aside, there's a defense attorney who has, has voiced a concern. That virtual court is systemic racism because he believes that it, it, people who have a. Historically lower income or less resources are going to be unable to attend the virtual court. And I think our answer to that is, we're going to monitor that. We're going to actually see and see if that's what we find out is happening. Because that's not what we, obviously what we want to do. But our actual practice that we've seen is a substantially. Higher number of people appearing for the virtual court. And they're appearing because they don't have to worry about childcare. They don't have to take a day off from work, which might cause them to lose their job. They don't have to find transportation from where they're at. They're able to come in, we allow them to appear either by video or by phone. They don't have a smartphone or a tablet or laptop that they can get on to Zoom with. They can just, they can call in. And another compliment to, to, again, the staff here, because I'd like to say that I had nothing to do with it, but I really didn't. Is the way that they set it up that people can access. I've had defense attorneys say that their clients are able to access. The, the court in Bothel much more easily than any of their clients in any of the other courts. That we have it, it's a one-time click and you're in. And that, and we, when we send out the summons to appear, we give them a sheet that tells them how to appear. And because of COVID, we're still offering that, yeah, we have you scheduled for an in-person hearing. But if you're concerned, if you are a person at risk, if you have any of these concerns, you can opt into the virtual court. Option on the day that you're supposed to be in court. So it's really been wonderful. And again. I had a beautiful sunny Friday afternoon where we had 100% of the people on the calendar appear. That never happens. That never happens in in-person calendars. So what does this mean for the city though? It means huge savings. And, you know, the chief is talking about the jail budget. And this is probably more information than you want, but when an individual is picked up on a warrant or arrested. The initial fee from the, all jails is you have a booking fee, which is, you know. Hundred and some dollars usually. And I'm not, I don't have those numbers and I apologize. But again, it's not really part of my, my budget, but you pay that booking fee. Then if they appear to be on drugs, there's going to be a medical fee. If they are, have to be housed in the specialty area because they're on drugs, you're going to pay that higher fee for every day that they're booked. You also have a baseline fee if they're not, if they're just being booked as a normal member. And it's a pretty expensive. Process. So when we pick somebody up on a warrant, if we issue a warrant for somebody for not showing up for court. And they get picked up on that warrant, that's cost that the city has to, has to accommodate. And then what happens is we get back to court and it may be that they had a reason why they didn't appear, et cetera, et cetera. And, or the case is resolved and they're released. If we can avoid that initial pickup, if we can actually get them into court, they're actually speaking with their attorney. And potentially resolving the matter, moving, at least moving the pace forward through the process, it's a wonderful thing. So teamwork. With that, it's been a huge savings in that area alone because. And I, and I look at COVID, COVID was horrible. And COVID has, has created all kinds of horrible situations, financial situations. But it has a huge silver lining, in my opinion, because it's forcing us to look at how to do things differently. And how to accomplish what we're, what we are supposed to be doing in a manner. That maybe makes it so it's more accessible to people. We're live streaming court on YouTube, by the way, and I would love it. I've told you before, I'd love it if you come see me in court. Now you don't even have to come to court. You can just watch us on YouTube. So. And I think that's great. I think it is really fun that people will be able to participate in the criminal justice system simply by turning on their TV. Or their, whatever, their device. I want to step back during COVID. And I, and I had to actually look this up because I remembered that we did this. But here's something that came out that I want to keep going because again, I think it's a really good practice. And that is, I issued an emergency order in response to Snohomish County Jail. They had a, they essentially on March 5th issued a booking restrictions memo to all law enforcement. That because of COVID, they were not going to be accepting a wide variety of individuals into their jail. I was very pleased that law enforcement felt that they could come to, to the court and say. What can we do about this? And Captain Johnson came in and we were able to, I issued an emergency order. That granted permission to law enforcement to simply reissue court dates to individuals instead of booking them into jail. On Bothel warrants. Based on the COVID-19 guidelines. Again, that allows for that option. Now, going forward, COVID goes away, we're not in the same situation. I would like to see that happening with individuals where we have. A really low level amount of bail. Usually what that is, is that's an individual who, maybe it's their first criminal offense. Maybe, you know, it's a very de minimis offense, one that we would not normally be seeking jail time for, that kind of situation. Allowing Bothel law enforcement officers and figuring out the, the overarching policy. But allowing them that option of simply issuing a new court date instead of booking them into jail. Because the savings are there and the savings are real. And the real point is getting them into court, getting the matter resolved. And it goes, I think, right into what the chief was saying earlier about community policing. When you're an individual and you get contacted by a law enforcement officer and they say, you've got a warrant for your arrest. And they say that, here, I tell you what, I'm going to write you a new court date and you go to court on this date. Instead of booking them into jail. We're starting to talk about working out those. Those community relations, that the community policing kind of situation. So. Um. We've also worked into. And I'm, I'm looking at some of the things we have listed here. Adjusting the jury week. I guess I'll, I'll touch on that. It just seemed amazing to me that we were asking jurors to give two weeks of their time. These are citizens. Superior Court doesn't even do that. They only ask them to commit for a week. And we were doing two weeks. This way, we have a one-week commitment now. This was a big thing for prosecutor's office because they do take a lot of cases to trial. And unfortunately, we said, we're going to, we're going to try this and see if we can make it work. And we haven't had that chance yet because COVID came along. So we're going to see. But the idea is to let our citizens know they're going to commit for one week. And I think it makes it a lot easier for them. We only pay them $10 a day to be jurors. So it's, you know, we try to give them to be, give them what we can to make that a less onerous responsibility. Let's see, we're trying to get DVMRT started here. I think we've got that going. It's the probation classes. Bench warrant efficiencies. We've started a process where individuals, it used to be that people would come in and ask to have their warrant quashed. And they just immediately got put on the calendar and defense attorneys didn't know and prosecutor didn't often know. And it was just a matter of quashing the warrant. And then we would set another court date for them to appear. Every time you set a court date, to me, you're setting an opportunity for that person to fail to make the court. So if they're here, let's do what we can on the case. Let's, you know, take, let's touch, touch it once instead of touching it twice. And so we've set up a situation where we're not doing that because we want both prosecutor and defense counsel to have an opportunity to be prepared. So if they come in and ask to quash their warrant, they, we give them two options. You can just set a court date and it'll be the, the, it won't be a quash calendar, which is what it was before. It'll simply be whatever calendar they were supposed to be at, whether it was an arraignment calendar, a pre-trial calendar, a disposition calendar, whatever it was that they were supposed to be at that they missed. And we'll set it for a time when the attorneys will have at least a day or two to be aware of what's happening and be prepared to handle that case. So that's one of the efficiencies, virtual court, website improvements. We're allowing people to now do traffic tickets online. They can respond to their traffic tickets online, which is wonderful. And it's creating a lot of savings that way. In custody calendar changes, again, another silver lining from COVID. We created a situation where the individuals who are being transported here from the jails can be in the holding cell and appear by video. It's a huge, it's a time saver and it's also created a safety. It's eliminated a safety concern for those transport officers. And it's allowing us to process through things. It seems to me it's working substantially more efficiently. Than when we were bringing them all up to court and then taking them all back down. There was a whole bunch of stuff that goes on with that, that is just no longer an issue when we're, when we're dealing with it in that situation. And so that's been a huge savings. And I'm hoping that we'll be able to continue with something like that in the future. All right, I think I've talked too long about this slide, so I'm going to move on to the next one. This is that, that bird's eye view looking down on our, on our preliminary budget estimates. There's not a huge amount of difference. Other than that interfund services, which is the self-assurance, self-insurance allocation. So there's really nothing that we've had to deal with that. If you have specific questions, we can go back and talk about those. Move on. So because of COVID, we've had some, we, we lost one clerk position. It's unfunded at this time. And so that means I have two clerks who can work in the courtroom. I have Courtney and one other clerk who can, who works at the front desk and processes phone calls. Two probation officers. We're hoping that we're going to see a lot of cost savings and time savings because of the master calendar. Oh, that's why I went to search warrant processing. Glad I wrote that in there. Again, kudos to the police department and they're really Mr. Work. It's a lot of information, but 34 hours is a magic number for a judge. You go over that and you become a full-time judge. And if you're a full-time judge, you have to be elected. So it's a magic number. It's also a magic number in my contract. We did it a little differently than the contract for the previous judge, which said that she could only work for 34 hours. And so she had to stop after 34 hours. Mine says, I can work for more than 34 hours. But when, but my salary is for 34. So if I go beyond that, there's an additional cost to the city. And I just want to make sure everybody feels comfortable. That additional cost would nowhere come near to the cost of running a campaign. So there's a nice balance there. So with that, my hours that the administrative office of the court. Says I should, I should count towards those 34 hours are obviously my hours in the courtroom, my hours in my office, doing work to prepare for the courtroom. There are also the hours that I spend responding to search warrant calls and doing probable cause findings over the weekends. Because the previous judge's contract was different, she had pro temps covering those at night. Search warrant calls. And she had them covering other matters during the day to make sure she didn't go over those 34 hours. Because my contract is different, I stopped that immediately. I do my own calls at night. But law enforcement has stepped up when I asked them to, if it's, if it's not an emergency. Obviously, if it's a, a search warrant where you need to do blood draw or something like that, or it's an evolving situation, definitely call me, no matter what. But if it's not an emergency, send me the, the search warrant as an email. I'll read it during business hours. So I'm not adding hours to my time. And then I can call you on shift. So maybe it'll be after my business hours, but it'll be a two-minute phone call. Not a half hour, 45 minute review of a search warrant. And so that two-minute phone call where I swear you in, and then I can send you my response to your request from search warrant. So that saves a huge amount of those extra hours. And they have been wonderful about it so far. They've just done a great job. I get emails. And it's almost like they're kind of excited about that this, once I explained to them why. I was doing it. It's like they're kind of excited to be part of the team, to be part of the, the money savings team. So that's, I, I'm really happy with that. Work crew, community service. We do, we, I tell people a lot of times, like on their legal financial obligations, that if they are having a hard time. With some of them, unfortunately, law doesn't allow me to do it on all of them. But on those that I can, they can do community service to work them off. And if they ask for the stash, then they pay minimum wage. Work crew is something that, that we're working on at getting started up. It's less expensive than sending somebody to jail. It's something to do, hopefully doing it around our community so that they become invested in the community. And it's, it's hard to want to go out and tag something if you just cleaned it, that kind of stuff. So that's, you know, at least that's the concept. Public records portal, that's something that, again, Courtney's working on establishing so that we have an easier process for providing public records. And that, in that way, it costs savings. Future opportunities. You know, I know that the, that the community court or the restorative justice is a big. Big, a focus for every council. It's a big focus for me. I love it. And I think it's extremely productive. It's been around for a long time and it has shown really fantastic results. But it's expensive. We looked into a little bit what, what we could do, what, you know, and it's one of those things where opportunities become available and you're like, ugh. There's a building right behind the court that's available. It's empty right now, I believe. There's a building right behind the court that's available. It's empty right now, I believe. And it's, the rent for it is about $72,000 a year. A fantastic location for a community resource center associated with the courts. But right now may not be the time to enter into the lease for a building for that purpose. And again, that's obviously your call, but my perspective is, we're in a situation where the budget has to be balanced. I'm not going to ask you to spend a huge amount more on the court. We'll get by. It's just what are, what are we going to be providing? And we're, you know, Courtney and I have discussed it. We watched some information from the court that they're doing in Edmonds. It's a post-conviction, it's really not community court, they call it that, but it's really just beefing up their probation department to kind of provide all of the things, or many of the things at least, that you would get from community court just through the probation department. And so we're looking into possibly doing some of those things in the meantime, trying to get maybe some of those, those stakeholders that we want to get involved to start participating by Zoom. Easier for them, less expensive, et cetera. Get, kind of getting them hooked in. And then once they're hooked in, seeing when things start to open up, if we can't get them physically in. You know what I mean? So we're working on that, working on what we can do, what we can offer. Again, we have work, you might see work crew, you might think that's a big deal. We want to do work crew in City of Bothell. I'd like to see an opportunity where, you know, one of the big things in community court is you tell people, "Okay, fine, you violated, so we're going to have you do community service." You really want them doing community service in the community. You don't want them doing community service, you know, in Spokane. You want them here where they cause, where they, where they have been part of the negative in the community. You want them here making it positive. And you also want it to be immediate. And it's kind of hard to make it immediate if it's in Spokane. So that's one of the things. Work crew in Bothell, community service in Bothell, that kind of situation. Opportunities. We're looking at, you know, the, the citywide implementation of the parking and traffic strategy. So there's a whole bunch of stuff that we can do there. I would love to see electronic ticketing. I would love to see working with the police department about maybe making it so that those tickets are immediately, any that are issued are immediately issued. My staff aren't stuffing envelopes and sending them out. Pursuing the electronic case file product. I know Paul talked about that yesterday. Just really being able to have everything electronic. That's a huge savings in storage, it's a huge savings in ease of providing public disclosure information. Again, virtual court, we've had such great success with it. I'd like to figure out a way to keep it going even after things open up more. Those are, and those are things, community court, virtual court, it's not terribly expensive. So we're going to be looking into a lot of these things as ways we can make the court work better without having the cost of things come out more. And I'm just going to kind of come, circle back around because I know that the council has talked about human services. And when I'm talking about that community court and that potential of that community resource center, that's an area where you're going to see those, those human services being able to be provided out of a specific location. Community courts can be just within the court, or community courts can be a court associated with a resource center. Right now, we have in our, in the court, we have a probation office that's right inside the door. So you're not coming into the court itself. And they, in there, we have hygiene kits, we have coats that have been donated that can be given to individuals who need them. We have some, some slipper type shoes. Little snacks, if they need a snack, they can come there for bus passes. We're, we're trying to provide things to people and generally speaking, they come in because they have a probation appointment. And if you find out that they have needs, we're trying to, to show them that we're not just the court. We're not just where they're going to be punished. And to try to get them those resources that they need. Maybe we should move on to the next slide. Everybody's been here for a long time. Oh, yay, questions! And I know you've got a million of them because I, I've heard some of them. So I think we're supposed to take down the, unless people have questions about a specific slide, we're going to go ahead and take down the presentation and then answer questions. There we go. Hooray! I can see you all.
All right. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Oops, you're muted.
Thank you.
Okay.
So one of the things we've been talking about this evening, and some of what you've talked about kind of fits into this. When you're talking about developing, developing human service resource strategy, what do we do with the people that come in that obviously need mental health services?
That is, that is one of the big topics right now for almost all courts. There's a whole bunch of legislation that's come out on that recently with regard to the courts. It's a cluster right now, to put it mildly. What we do is we say you need to be evaluated. You need to know that you have the mental capability to proceed. Assuming that we're at that level. And so then we put them on a list. Usually for, for us, often it's out of custody. And I was just told today that the expectation is it will take a year for that person to be evaluated. So when we're talking about, this is at the state level. There has been a complete revamping. They're trying to make it better. They're trying to figure out how to make it better. But this goes all the way back to the 1970s when we decided that the way that we were handling the mentally ill in the state of Washington was cruel and unusual. And I will say this, I believe it was. But we defunded all of the programs and said, "We're going to take that money and create new programs for dealing with the, with the needs of these individuals." And then that just went away. The money was never reinvested. It just never came back. And that's why you see law enforcement acting in mental health. That's why you see the courts being an absolutely poor substitute for mental health issues. And so we, we start mental health courts. We start trying to deal with it. We refer them to professionals. But I am not qualified to determine if an individual needs services or not. And that's really down, you know, I, I might think I'm really smart and everything else, but I don't have any of those degrees. My degree is in business, you know, and law. So when you talk about what is needed, we're a poor substitute, but we're trying to fill that gap. And the question is, at the state level, are they going to create a situation where we can address those individuals? Because that's, that's a huge number of the people that come through. If they're not in a position--
I would just say--
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I would just say that I've been around the state level for 24 years and I'm going to tell you, it's not going to happen there.
I know they're trying. I know that there's, there's some bills that have been pushed through and some, some beds that have been created. But you're right. I don't know that there's going to be the actual solution that we need until it becomes a huge enough issue that it, it gets to the forefront.
So I, I guess I'll go back again to say, I believe within regions, we have to do something because I don't think we can depend upon the state. So as you look at what you do as a court, we should be thinking about this.
Absolutely. And you know, when I have someone who comes in and says, "All of these underlying things that I've been doing are because," for example, an individual might say, "Because I, I didn't know I was bipolar. And now I've, I've discovered that and I'm in the treatment for it." And I'm like, "Great." So instead of making that individual the cookie cutter and say, "Okay, you need to do a drug-out power evaluation," et cetera, I go, "Okay, great." You provide us instead with proof that you're maintaining your medications and that you're participating in your mental health treatment. So that we address that issue as a court. But again, I'm relying on reports from a professional because I'm not that professional.
But I, I liked your first step. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Because trust me, there are times I don't know what I'm doing.
Councilmember Dewar.
I'm so sorry. It's just not responsive. Thank you, Mayor. Well, first I want to tell the city manager, she did it again. She hired an amazing person. I, we haven't had a chance to really interact with you, but your presentation was stellar. I'm so excited to have you. It gives me a lot of hope that we're headed in the right direction despite budget concerns and whatnot. I, I'm just really, really excited to hear some of your, your work and your strategies around efficiencies. And, you know, hopefully someday, we'll get to a point where we can do the human services resource center because I think that would be amazing and, and a dream come true in our, in our city. So just keep up the good work and thank you so much for all you've, you've done to kind of push the courts forward and, and be progressive.
I appreciate that. You know, I'm actually going to jump in because I think yesterday you asked a question about what we want to do with passports. And I didn't address that in my main presentation because it's kind of something we've pushed off to the side. But I wanted to, I want to answer that question, if you don't mind.
Yes, I'd love to hear the answer.
So what was happening, it's, it's an issue of allocation of resources. And what was happening is they were offering to do the passports just whenever people came in. And there was a huge demand for it. And so it was taking up a tremendous amount of time from the one clerk we had who was, who was certified to provide those. And it was actually somewhat disruptive to court, to the other clerks being able to get their jobs done. Because there's all these people in the lobby, there's all this noise, there's all this other stuff. And that clerk was constantly being interrupted from her normal job to do passports. So the reason that we're considering, we, we have been considering the passport, instituting it, is two things. We found out we can, that the government will allow us to set specific days and to require people to, to provide or to obtain an appointment ahead of time. And so that way, we could regulate when people were coming in. And we could say, "It's only going to be on a couple of days and it's only going to be during these specific hours." And it would be hours when the court would not be as busy as it normally is. So it would allow an opportunity. We're discussing the possibility, if possible, even using the jury room. And then if we added providing the photos. And I know this is, so it was $25 per processing fee that the court was making previously. US government's up to $35. And then if you charge $15 for the photo, that means that it's $50 coming in. And of course, this is not taking into consideration the expense of getting the equipment and supplies there. But I think that, and I'm going to try to really quickly sweep through all my notes here. We had it figured out, just estimating it on-- See, that's what happens when you, like, there we go. We had it estimated in between 2010 and 2014, collected about $260,000 for 10,527 passports. The, if we added the enhanced services of the photo and that, it would, that same number would equal 525,000 for the same number of passports processed. You need to understand, even though we have stopped providing this service, the court still gets five to 20 inquiries for passports per week.
Wow.
So there's, it is, it, it's twofold. It's, there's a potential of revenue. But there's also a service that your community does not have access to here. They have to go to Lake Forest Park or to Kirkland or to Mill Creek or somewhere else to get their passports. And clearly, it's something that people are looking for. And so that's another option. There's a possibility, and, and I think we're, you know, talking with Jennifer, we, we we just, the possibility of maybe having it over at City Hall, coming here to the court, what would be best. Those are all options that need to be kind of fleshed out. But right now, I can tell you, because we had to give up that one person at the front desk, we really don't have staffing to be able, for the court to be able to function. I know my staff. My staff work really hard. They're fantastic. They're super efficient. And there's times when they're stretched to their limit. And I don't want to put, if we brought this in right now, I think it would be over the top. But if we work with maybe the city, maybe with other resources, we might be able to bring that in and make it an option, an offer for the city. So.
Thank you for that explanation. It makes a lot of sense because I think I've heard somewhere that when you're interrupted in your, in a task, it takes you another eight minutes to get back into the task. So that's a huge time waste for someone to be distracted as often as that. And I neglected to thank Courtney for all of her work. We know she's a star and she, she's very much appreciated. So I just wanted to pass them on as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? A couple of them. Okay.
Yeah, you guys are rock stars down there. We're your fans. I have to tell you, you made my day because I'm, I'm always looking for silver linings. And you just gave us a lot of silver linings. So, so you did make my day. And the other thing that I was impressed with is, is you're, you and Courtney and the rest of the staff, they're looking for opportunities. And you're creating some very productive baby steps where we're moving, you know, passports or restorative justice. You were saying, you know, you're, that's not really happening where you are. And yet, I'm sitting there thinking, getting people out, getting people out to do a work instead here, instead of in Spokane, that gives them, you know, providing whoever's overseeing that, that gives, I would think, has the ability to foster a sense of ownership of community. So--
Yeah, that's the whole point of community court, is to--
That's, yeah. Yeah, that's huge. And then also just an officer that allows to re, reissues a court date.
Yeah.
Those are all things that I think are part of that restorative justice. Not as significant as someone who's bipolar or schizophrenic, but with a drug addiction on top of it. Councilmember Thompson and I got to go through Olympia when Olympia's therapeutic court, absolutely incredible. Olympia, the state has a great little video. Probably takes maybe 10, 15 minutes to go through. So anybody who's going therapeutic, what, go watch it. It does, and watch it again because it's, there's a lot of information that they're throwing at you that, that I think Bothell as a whole would be sold on this. And then I have a question for you because you said Edmonds is doing their version. Are they where they have, you know, where we can be snoopy and go find it on, you know, something on the internet where they explain what they're doing? Or is--
Because of COVID, they're doing a lot of their stuff like we are by Zoom. But their probation officer was willing to meet with us and go through and explain to us how he's handling those hearings. And I suspect that if you approached them, they would be happy to, to take you through something like that.
Oh, that, oh, that's a good idea. That's a real good idea.
And the Judge Coburn, who's the judge down in, in Edmonds, she's currently, I think she's running unopposed for the Court of Appeals. So we're about to release her and someone else will be coming in. But if you get in there quickly, you might be able to get her, her, she kind of created it, so it's always going to be best to hear it from her.
Right, right. No pressure, mind you. Okay. And myself with a little bit of OCD, I'm, I'm going to put it on my to-do list. Seems like I have one more question for you. Shoot. I'll think of it once I, you know, go on and, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Props and kudos. And if I think, if I think of a question, I'll send it to Jennifer who can send it to you. Stick the course.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I love this presentation. It seems like everything you've done has not just helped the budget and efficiencies, but also has increased access and equity. And you've brought us a biennial budget that is lower than the last biennium, which I really appreciate. So thank you for that. I love the fact that you allowed Bothell law enforcement to issue a new court date instead of booking-- instead of booking into jail on a warrant. I think that's fantastic. Um, not just for budget, but also if we're looking at restorative instead of punitive justice. I don't see how putting people in jail overnight if they're not a danger helps that. Uh, I have one other question, um, on the clerk position that was unfunded. Do the efficiencies we gain from virtual court, um, mean that you need less support staff in general? Or does it add to it because you're having more people coming in or metaphorically coming in?
So when we're holding court, we need to have a clerk in the courtroom. Um, and so it's, the way that we do virtual court is often I'm either in my office or at home. And, but we have to have a clerk in the courtroom. We're still having to make all the entries. We're still having to do all of the things that clerks do that are way above my pay grade, quite frankly. Courtney is usually here running everything. She's what, so you come into a, a waiting room and she's finding out who you are. She's connecting you with your attorney. She's putting you into a breakout room. She's admitting people. So she's working very hard. So I think from that perspective, her normal duties kind of are having to be fit in, in between while she's running those, those calendars. Um, we're training up other people so that she can actually maybe someday have a vacation again.
Good.
And that will make it easier also when we have that, that load can spread out a little bit more. But right now it's, it's, it's a learning curve and it's also, so it's, no, we're not, we don't need less people because of virtual court. It's the same number and, and maybe even a little bit more until we get it totally worked out.
Because people are showing up now.
And that's awesome.
That's great.
Yeah.
On the Community Court, um, you mentioned the, um, the lease cost for space. Is that the majority of the cost? I mean, is that the, like, is that the big thing?
So that is going to be, yes, getting a building is always the big thing. And then what we try to do is we try to beg, grovel and plead and get people to send somebody for free. Um, we might even see if somebody, some of these treatment providers that don't have a footprint in Boffel might want to maybe sub some of those spots or something like that so that they actually have offices there. You know, that might be something to think about. Um, you know, there's a lot of options out there. It's just that, you know, I guess the, the direction that Jennifer's probably looking for and I'm looking for is you to say, yeah, if we want to do that, go find out all this information for us. So we can decide if we really want to do that depending on the, on the actual hardcore numbers.
How much space is required for Community Court?
I guess, and then, and different courts do it differently is the first thing I will say. When we went down to Olympia, the court used kind of a modified hallway where they stuck chairs to be able to do the actual court. But then they had a little building next door where they did the resource, the Community Resource Center. And they had all the different providers in little tiny rooms. If you go over to Spokane, which is one of the first ones in, in Washington, they use the main floor of the public library. And they have all these kind of more expansive rooms where they have tons of providers at all these little tables because they have been around long enough. They've grown to be quite huge as far as what they provide to people. Um, so they, they have a screening and you come in the front door, you go through a screening and then they have set up, as soon as you walk through the screening, on the other side of it, they have all the free lunches that are donated. And people get, they can eat and then they can go to court and then they have people that are there. If there's somebody gets ordered to community service, there's people who want people for community service waiting to transport them out to the job site so they can get it done that day. I mean, it's really, you know, there's a lot of different ways you can do Community Court. The first Community Court, just kind of give you an idea, was in Times Square in New York 20, over 25 years ago. That's where it started. So a lot of information out there.
Is, is there a way we could structure it so we're using assets we have when they're not being used? Like we have, you know, council chambers sits empty a lot of the time. Like, could we do it on the weekend when people are not in a building or another? Like, have, have we looked at that kind of thing?
Um, we haven't really explored that because then you're talking about, am I coming in on the weekends? And are you paying me to come in on the weekends?
So you have to be there for the Community Court?
That's, that's the, that's the court part.
I clearly need to come down to the court and see how things work a little bit at some point in time.
Awesome.
Um, just one more question on Community Court. Uh, for sure, it seems like there's a short-term cost, but is there a long-term financial win due to lower recidivism and things like that?
You know, and it is, it is, to me, it's that soft number that is really not available to quantify. You have Community Court and it's functioning. And so you are not having crime, the level of crime in your community. And you're having individuals who were essentially a drain on the community who are now productive members of society who are, have turned things around substantially. What is the benefit to the community? That's, and what, how do you quantify that? So yes, long-term gains of Community Court. And I'm just going to tell you guys, because I'm in one of those silver lining groups, this week has been awesome for me because I have had so many people appear who have gotten off of drugs. Who have gotten, off of the, you know, the, off of the merry-go-round as, as I often refer to it. Um, one gentleman appeared on, by Zoom because he was sitting in the cab of the ginormous construction equipment thing that he was working in, in his little vest. Because he didn't have to get off the job. And he told me he's clean and sober. He's been clean and sober for two years. He has gotten married. He has a 10-month-old baby. You know, you go on down the line. And so it's like, yay, okay, that's a great uplift for me. Next day I have somebody, I'm clean and sober. I've been clean and sober. I've got a job. I've gone to school. I got my GED. You know, those are the, I mean, I want to talk about what gets me up in the morning. We can, I can sit and fill you with these stories when I start hearing. And, and I have to say, none of them had anything to do with me. I'm too new. These are people who did it. And I just, and the one guy who was in the construction thing is, I'm like, I'm like, yay, awesome, kudos to you. And he's like, well, you know, if you want me to come down and talk to your court, I'll do that. I'm like, awesome. So these are the things, you know, we want, we want that. And, you know, and, and just as an aside, I did, I did a wedding today. So we can do them again, okay? And I did a wedding today and one of the members of the, of the party, that were not, one of the witnesses had her baby with her, one to two-year-old baby. And these are people of color. And she wanted to know if I would take a picture with her. And I thought, okay, you know, we're all social distancing. We're all wearing our masks. And I thought she meant with them, like, standing. And she walked up and handed me the baby. Just boom. And I said, I'm like, okay. So I'm holding the baby and we're kind of posing together. And she says, because I want that picture to tell her who's going to sentence her when she does something wrong. And I said, oh, no, no, you tell her that I am taking this picture with her because I've chosen her to be my replacement. I want her to grow up to be a judge. That's the kind of stuff that we need to be doing when we're reaching out to these people. It's not that we're always, and it's, it's that whole community policing, it's the whole Community Court. It's reaching out to these people and saying, we're moving forward and we're dragging you with us, basically, if we have to. So.
I'm sold.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wow, pulling on the heartstrings there. Uh, great job, Judge. Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, um, Judge. That story, um, means a lot.
It's huge.
Thank you for sharing that story. Uh, I, I'm trying to hold back right now because, um, that's, those are the types of things that we need people to do. Um, and you just set the gold standard right there by doing, by saying what you said to them, you set the gold standard. And that's why Boffel is Boffel. So, um, thank you, Frank, thank you for doing that. That was amazing. That family will never forget that. So, thank you.
They, they keep that.
It will. And, you know, um, little stories mean a lot. And a judge many, many years ago lifted me up the same way that you lifted that family up. So thank you.
Awesome. Glad to hear it. Any other questions? Oh, I know, I need, there was a question that came up yesterday, sorry. Question that came up yesterday about fines in the court. And I think you guys have probably all heard this, but just to clarify, because it was a public comment, and I'm going to make it really quick. I appreciate that individual's concerns about the, the fines that are outstanding in the courts. But his opinion of how the court is run is because he's never been in my courtroom, which is a good thing. You know, we don't really want all of our citizens, citizens coming into my courtroom. Every person who is in my courtroom hears, if you're having any problems making your payments on your, I'm going to allow you to set up a payment plan. If you're having any problems making your payments, talk to this court. We are not, you know, we'll, we will work with you as long as we know you are serious about making those payments. You know, we accept $5. The clerks know that when they come in, somebody comes in and says, my, my fines are in collections, but I have $10 that I could pay on them if you pull them out of collections that, you know, 99% of the time, the, the standing order is pull it out of collections. If they're willing to start making some payments, if they're willing to, to work with us, we work with them. The seven, seven percent fee, that's when an individual chooses to use, either after-hours access by phone, which takes them to N Court, or the, the, um, online payments, which is also through N Court. And seven percent is what N Court charges for all courts. Everybody has that. But if they call us directly during business hours, there's no fee for taking an online and over-the-phone payment. Um, and we work with people, um, that pay, pay it all within 60 days. That's not part of my court philosophy at all. It never has been. People, and, and I'll, I'll take you, take you down another little path. And I'm really worried that I'm using up all of the time for the fire department. But I'll be really quick. You know, Paul talked about it a little bit yesterday. The, the legislation that exists is based on Supreme Court decisions where they've figured out that keeping on legal financial obligations on people who don't have any money is cruel and unusual. If you don't have any money at all to pay, then you're just putting them in, in this debtor's court kind of situation where they're, we're, we're putting people in jail for not being able to pay. So the Supreme Court basically said, you need to be looking at their ability to pay. You need to be making those decisions before you impose that. Um, legislature took that and, and made that into law. Because of that, and I agree, $10 to any of us here may not be that much, but $10 to somebody who's on the streets is huge. So when we're, when we're working with them, we're working with them. I let them do community service as much as I can, I think I already said that. And I see the chief is there to remind me that he needs to talk to you guys too. So I'm going to stop talking unless you have other questions.
I think that was it. I just want to say what a fabulous first presentation you had. And I, I am so happy to have you here. That trip down to Olympia seemed a lifetime ago with everything that's been happening. But I think, you know, just seeing that Community Court and hearing all of these stories and more, uh, information on it, it seems like a great direction for our court to strive to. Uh, and looking into the information on what we can, if there are some city facilities, uh, like Councilmember Thompson, you know, brought up, not on the weekends. But yeah, I think doing the homework on that would be a, a great option to bring forward to us uh, in these later stages of the budget. Great, Chief? Yes? We're going to take a, a five-minute break and we'll come back at 8:50. And then we'll start with you. Great. Great.
You just look blue, that's all.
I'm in a, I'm in a back room with weird lighting.
Chris, you look, you look great.
Blue is the wrong color. Exactly.
All right, welcome back. We have, uh, our next topic here is fire and we have a chief crew with us.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and get us going here. I'm trying not to hit the button too many times so we don't get multiple versions on here. Here, ready we go. Hey, look at that, okay. I'm almost as good as the police chief, alright. So, uh, good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, I am Bruce Crong, Fire Chief. And I really appreciate the opportunity to present some highlights of the Fire Department's proposed twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Clearly, you've saved the best presentation for the night, for last. I'm all kidding there. I will try to talk a little slower than normal. I know I talk fast, so I'm gonna try to slow that down. And other people have said it, but during the presentation, I have no problem if you need to interrupt. If I don't see you or, because everybody's reduced, just please chirp on and grab my attention. And I'll try to stop at least once and, and see if we have any questions. So we'll start with the, uh, quick overview of the department. As everybody's probably aware, the Fire Department is an all-hazard service that includes fire, EMS, hazardous materials, technical rescue, wildland, and rescue swimming. So basically, when you call nine-one-one, if you don't need the police, you get a fire response. We respond to everything from flooding, falls, auto accident, trees and houses, broken pipes, and the occasional ducklings in the storm drain. So we have twelve personnel and two medic, two shoreline medics, serving Bothell citizens every day of the year. Uh, I would like to add that during this COVID-nineteen crisis, our firefighters and medics have responded to and transported numerous COVID-related cases without a single reported exposure to any of our personnel. Only a few departments in the area have been so successful in this regard. And additionally, to my knowledge, uh, we have no city employee that's contracted COVID-nineteen to date, so that's great. Uh, the Fire Department primarily serves the citizens of the city of Bothell and of Snohomish County Fire District Ten in unincorporated Snohomish County. Uh, secondarily to that, we do help support surrounding areas such as North Shore, Woodinville, Kirkland, South Snohomish County Fire, uh, Fire Department, and Snohomish County Fire District Seven. We do that through automatic aids, and they in return help out, help us out as well. In two thousand nineteen, we had a, we recorded a six thousand, six hundred and forty calls, which is an increase of four point six percent from the previous year. Uh, and that actually is several hundred calls more than we did the previous year. That's kind of an anomaly. Uh, every year, our call volume goes up, but this between eighteen and nineteen was quite a big jump. I'm not sure why, but that, that's what it is. Uh, the picture, if you can see that there is, okay, at the lower right, is, uh, is at a promotional ceremony where we had five very happy firefighters being promoted to lieutenant as a result of moving to the four-platoon system. We also had a, a battalion chief in the same promotion. This was clearly the biggest promotional ceremony that departments ever had. Uh, we are already seeing the benefits of the four-platoon schedule in our ability to deliver training, training much more efficiently. All four of the north-end, uh, Fire Departments now, Shoreline, North Shore, Woodinville, Bothell, were all on the same schedule, and that really helps out. As an added bonus, the four-platoon, uh, uses a debit days, they're called, which helps us to offset and cover vacations during the year. So that's kind of a, a plus to that as well. Got a few of the accomplishments that just wanted to highlight real quick. Just to let you know kind of what's going on, what you've been doing as far as the bond. Uh, we've, uh, been led by Public Works, takes the lead on this one. And we have a design team of BN Builders and Miller Hall. They are working hard to develop, uh, the designs for the two stations right now. They're also working on interim facilities that can house our firefighters during the station construction. And they are also making plans to reconfigure a, a part of the third floor of City Hall to allow admin, fire admin is gonna occupy that space. As far as the levy, four of the six levy fire positions have been filled. We are in the process of hiring the final two of the six. And in fact, conditional job offers have gone out to two candidates this week. And then we hope to have them onboard by end of July, early August. That's going well. We were able to use a number of our light-duty operations personnel, those folks that are injured and trying to get back into full duty. We used them to assist our crews with the company inspections, the business inspections, and completed almost one hundred percent of the crew inspections in two thousand nineteen, which is phenomenal. Fire prevention personnel completed almost all of their permitted inspections. And permitted inspections are things like, uh, occupancies that have hazardous materials, put-in-duck systems, like restaurants, uh, places of assembly, repair garages, and that kind of thing. Until the, uh, development of our acting lieutenant and acting battalion chief taskbooks, we did not have a very good standardized way to prepare our personnel for these leadership roles. The task manuals give personnel the skills they need to adequately perform at these levels and give the command staff reassurance and confidence that our acting officers have the ability to do their job. Uh, these taskbooks are directly related to Goal Four of the two thousand eighteen, twenty-three strategic plan. Uh, we saw March first was a big milestone. That was the official start date for the North King County Training Consortium. Uh, I, I really wanted to have a catchier name, but I got overruled on that, so that's what it is. I'm stuck with that. Uh, the consortium training staff is really motivated and excited to do their job. Uh, following the adage, if life gives you lemon, make lemonade. The training staff took that to heart and, uh, used the time because they had reduced in-person and, uh, in, in field. They couldn't go out in the field due to COVID, right? They're kind of stuck in the office. They used that time to write the new training policy and standardize the training manual they needed to do at some point, and it forced them to do it early, which gave them a huge jumpstart on the whole training consortium, and it was just awesome. So, uh, and then also participation in the training consortium is directly related to Goal Three of our eighteen, twenty-three strategic plan. So here's the, the preliminary budget estimate. You've seen these from everybody. Um, I think the only thing that kind of is, is unique on this one, uh, and some of the other ones did too, but the interfund services, you can see there's kind of a big jump between, uh, eighteen and nineteen. There are two reasons for that primarily. One, we, uh, the city started their own mechanic services. We started using in, in-house mechanics, and we had a contract with a Redmond Fire for years. And that was in our, uh, the, uh, the general fund budget for fire. And that was transferred to an interfund, so that went up a little bit. And also, the, uh, safety manager position came into play, and that was afforded some, some extra money to help do their job more. And so that added to the, to the, to the interfund services. So, um, a couple of things like that just, uh, hit at one time. So that's why that number, uh, essentially doubled, uh, over the couple of years there. Any questions so far? You're doing good? I, I can only see three people, so just chime in if you do. So as far as requests, yes? Okay.
Um, Chief, uh, thanks for, um, talking about your four-platoon strategy and the money savings. I, I don't mean to do a gotcha, but I, um, I wanted to talk about the, um, the, the budget and the over, being over budget this year. Because I think it's important for the, the community to understand that some things are just outside of our control. And so I'm talking, I'm referring to the eight hundred thousand dollars. And I just wondered if you wouldn't mind, um, explaining why that happens so people understand why sometimes we don't have control over those, those, um, expenditures.
Ooh. That was really good.
I mean, trans, I think transparency is always good. And I, you know, I know you're very careful with money and, and, you know, you've worked really hard to, to save overtime with this four-platoon strategy. Um, some things are out of our control, and I think, I think the community shouldn't understand that.
Sure. So you know what? I had that listed, I have that here, and I had it all lined up, and I don't have it in front of me. But from memory, I would say, we did look at that closely. There is several factors in that. Part of it is, uh, is accounting and the way we do things. There is a two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar, it's called a G A S B, and the finance director might be able to explain this better than me. It's an insurance, uh, uh, cost that's added to the, that's taken out of budget, but we get refunded through the government at the end of the year. So it comes back into the budget, but it, on the books, it's hard, it's hard to track. So it looks like it's an overage on the books because we didn't, we didn't account for that money. We had to pay it, but it came back into the general fund. So that was one of the costs. We had some, uh, wildland, uh, overtime costs, and we don't, we don't. Wildland is essentially a trade-out, so we, we are, we are reimbursed for all the money we spend in overtime for wildland, through EMAC and the government contracts. We don't send anybody out unless I'm assured they're gonna get paid back. So that money comes back, but the city will initially pay out, oh, gosh. In, in some years, it's been three hundred thousand dollars. Wasn't quite that much last year, but that money does come back eventually. It takes a while, sometimes six months. But again, it goes to the general fund, and it's not always readily available or readily seen that it's gone to the fire, back to the fire budget. So that's a, even though it's kind of a wash, it, it looks like it's an overage. There was, uh, overage in the response overtime staffing, which I'll talk about next. Uh, that was, that was, uh, and that's kind of overtime that's, it's hard to predict. You're, you're kind of going on past performance and, and, you know, part of that has, you know, you can't, you, you don't know when people are gonna call in sick or get injured, right? And sometimes you just have bad years. So we try to do the best we can with that. And, uh, there was a couple of other items on there. Um, I don't wanna put Chris on the spot. We talked about this, but, um, and I apologize, I don't have that. I had that number all broken down for you in case it came up. But that's essentially what it was. Um, the, uh, of the eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, the biggest one was the, um, um, the, what we didn't have really control over was the response overtime staffing. And, and most of the other ones were a one-time deal, or, uh, uh, some of them were money that actually came back eventually into the budget, but didn't show up because of the general fund way that works. Does that help out a little bit? I can get that for you. I, I have the breakdown, um, just not at fingertips, unfortunately.
No, that would be great. And I thought I had also been told that it had something to do with, um, just a lot more staff than typical being on, I don't know what you call it, like health leave or disability or some temporary, um, I, I don't know what it's called.
Uh, that, that could be either, uh, either sick leave or disability. We have a long-term disability, and in two thousand nineteen, at one point in the year, we had fourteen people on extended disability on our staff. Huge, huge number, just, just a bad time. Um, and throughout the year, that, that ebbed and flowed. But one time, we were just, we were just overtime every day, it was making us nuts. And, and what do you do? You have people that are sick and they can't come to work. So that, that's part of our staffing model. When you have, when we, we have twelve people on staff every day, it's twenty-four hour shift. You have someone calling sick, you gotta call somebody in. You're, you're paying twenty-four hours of overtime. It's not like someone that's, like me, if I, if I'm out sick and you call somebody to replace me, it's eight hours, right? For the day. So that adds up in a hurry when you're doing that, um, for individuals.
Does that, does the four-platoon strategy help with that at all, or, or not really?
Um, I believe it will. There's a number of factors in that. Uh, the, the thing that I touched on briefly, and I'm, I really don't wanna get too far because it gets confusing, is the use of debit days. When you have a platoon system, you work, those three shifts work more days per year, right? Because it's only, it's three divided by, six, three sixty-five divided by three. When you have four platoons, you have four shifts splitting the year up, and so they work less shifts. So to get those average hours to make the same amount of hours they work between the two systems, uh, you have to, firefighters actually work back extra days in the year. In our case, we have twelve days a year that they have to work back. So they're still working the same amount of time during the year, but they have to schedule twelve days their debit days. And we use those days to fill in blanks, so we let them take their vacations. And we look at the calendar and say, okay, we've got this day, we've got an officer off or two people off. We will allow them to cover with their debit days on those days. So we, we help to, to stabilize the, the vacancies that we normally would get in a three-platoon system by using those debit days. And we, we worked very successfully this year. Well, the system we, we, we use, I think is kind of unique. We have some very smart people, and we, uh, we work together on that to do that. And it worked out great for us, worked out good for the firefighters. So, uh, we're gonna try again next year and see if we can get even better at it. So we were hoping by using those debit days, we can cover some of those, uh, vacancies that normally we wouldn't be able to do. As far as sick leave use, uh, jury's still out on that one. Uh, we were in a forty-eight, ninety-six shift, and, you know, if someone called in sick, oftentimes they'd be gone for two days in a row. And now where you're not, you work, uh, one day on, one day off, one day on, five days off. Um, they're able to, uh, recuperate in that time. So if someone calls in sick for twenty-four, they've got at least a, a day window to get better for their next shift. So we're hoping that's gonna help cut down some of that overtime. Uh, but it's yet to be seen. We're still looking at those numbers.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and go on with the, finish this one. So we, we kind of started on this one. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Chief Crong, you mentioned, I think it was, uh, six thousand, six hundred and forty calls last year. Could I get a breakdown just over email of kind of like what those were?
Absolutely, you bet. Uh, just off the top of my head, I know about eighty percent of our calls are EMS. And we kind of do two buckets. We, it's either EMS or non-EMS. And, and it doesn't mean it's fire, it could be anything, hazardous materials or anything. And, and some of those calls are, uh, downgraded, so it, it's just a smattering of calls. It's, but that's how many calls we actually rolled out of the barn on. Now, um, something I'd, I'd like to work on in the future is there's a, we have, uh, responses, and then, um, uh, I can't think of the term right now. But, you know, one call, right? So we had six hun, six thousand, six hundred and forty calls. We likely had about ten thousand units rolling, because oftentimes we roll multiple units to the same call. So, uh, uh, it's typical EMS call, I might just send an aid car, but any kind of fire call, we're gonna send three or four units to. So, um, the, the number of units showing up to a call is, is, is quite a bit different than the actual calls we get. And that's a, it's a label number to look at. When you're looking at overall, what you're doing in the department is how busy you are is, you know, it's one call, but it may involve six people, eight people from this. So, but I'll get to those numbers, certainly.
And, and on the EMS calls, like, do you have a breakdown of like, you know, what the complaint was? Or is it just like eighty percent EMS and it all goes in the same bucket?
Uh, well, we, we have ESO records, we can get all that. Uh, honestly, I'm not sure. I know things like heart attack and some specific, we are measuring those kind of outcomes on those things. Uh, but we can get most of that. I can see if we can, how easy it is to query those.
Send me, send me what you have that's not, you know, a huge pain to get.
Sure, yeah, you bet.
Thank you, Chief.
Deputy Mayor's on.
Um, this is coming secondhand or thirdhand, so it's, so it's going to be a, a vague, vaguely, um, loosely structured question here. I had someone email me and said, I forget how many calls. They thought it was a three or four-call incident. And said that they observed, I don't know, ladder, and I, I forget how many trucks, and then just observed a lot of people standing around. And I, and, um, so, uh, the question I have to ask you is, do you, every now and then, when you have downtime, do, do you have your crew go out to do an exercise on a real call to see what's going on and talk about it? I mean, what are people seeing when they see a lot of? And, and I'm sure it doesn't happen often, but when they see a lot of, uh, crew standing around, seemingly just watching somebody else. You know, a couple, uh, you know, a couple of our guys working.
Sure, sure. So, uh, first off, we would never send crews just to watch a scene or evaluate or see what's going on. We, we do that all the time after the fact in the training room. We'll look at calls, see how did they handle, how did you, you know, we listened to the call and, and that kind of thing. So we do that later for training, but we'd never send anybody out to the call. And then second of all, it's kind of like your, or my mom's old adage, there's safety in numbers kind of thing. Uh, we tend to send people appropriate to what we think that call could turn out to be. So on, for instance, if we get a, a automatic fire alarm at, uh, one of our larger buildings in downtown, we're gonna send a number of rigs to that, because if it is a fire, we are gonna need them there in a hurry. And, uh, we can ramp up, we can send one rig and then ask for help if we get there, but we don't wanna get behind the eight ball. So even at a, at a, say it's a house, right, and it comes in as a reported house fire, someone's dryer is on fire. And they say, I see smoke and flames coming from my dryer. We don't know what that is. So we have to respond appropriately to try to put that fire out and keep it to the room of origin. That's our, that's our goal. And so that'd be at least an engine, at least a ladder and probably an A car and a battalion chief and then their second engine. So right away, you've got a number of vehicles and what, what very often happens is the first, the first response vehicle gets there, goes in, investigates, oh yes, it's just a plugged drain or a plugged vent and they fix the scene or there's no fire. And they let everybody else know. Well, by that time, they're all rolling in, they're all getting there, they're all congregating. And they're kind of hanging out to, to get clear. And that's kind of when you see that happen. So everybody kind of scales down, they turn the sirens off and they're standing around talking for a few minutes until they get the absolute, yes, we've got it handled, you can all go home.
What, you, 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 you created another question for me. I do appreciate, because that would, that would, you know, that would be horrible to have a situation where you have a, oh crap, we should have called somebody else, you know, more people to this situation. So essentially, I, I guess I have two questions that aren't related. Is one, at some point, could you speak to having a mental health? As, don't we have a mental health person that's part of what you do?
Well, well, we do, we, we just, council approved the M I H, M O U, the mobile integrated health person that's funded through King County EMS and Shoreline runs that, that rig. It has a firefighter and a health professional on it. They make for low acuity calls. So if the firefighters go out and see someone, oftentimes it's the same people the police are seeing too, the same kind of folks. They usually have some kind of social issues that we just can't deal with. These folks can, they can give them the help. They don't give them the help, but they can get them to the help. Like the city manager was saying, we don't provide that service, but this is a way to funnel them to the correct help. So they're not as a burden on the system and they get the help they need frankly, right? Because that's what they really need. And so we do have one of those in place right now that, that responds pretty much weekdays right now.
I, I have to tell you, I think all of council, that resonated with all of council and I'm sure that, that for, for police and fire, that's, that's a huge lift to be able to have that person there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, it kind of comes up later in my talk, but that's one of the things. Firefighters and police, Chief Superlick touched on it as well, both firefighters and police, it, it's, it's, it wears on you. It's very, it's, it causes a lot of anxiety when you see the same people over and over for the same kind of problem. And you know they've got an issue, but you can't deal with it. You're not trained, you don't have the equipment, you can't deal with their issue. But you know they need help. And having an M I H unit or the navigator for the police is a way to get those folks, at least start them, give them the opportunity to get that help, to help themselves, right? And then it helps us by taking the burden off our call load and, and they get the help they need. So I, I think it's a great, great way to go.
It, it, it's real compassion. It's not fake compassion. It's real compassion that we're, that we're demonstrating as a city. So I, I, I agree. So one other quick question and then I'm going to yield the floor. Common, how common are dryer vent fires?
Oh, they're, not too common, but they, they do happen occasionally. I couldn't tell you, might have two or three a year. And usually it's very small, confined to the vent, you know, rarely does it actually come of anything besides that. But it's just, you know, you get smoke in the house, it's scary, you don't know where the fire is at. We just want to make sure it's not in the wall and trace up the wall in the attic. So I would say maybe three or four a year.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
There, I got it. Okay. Thank you for your presentation. What I wanted to talk about and ask you about is what kind of training do, that do you do for your staff? I might have missed it because I walked around a bit, if you said earlier. Sorry about that. But what kind of training do you have for your staff when it comes to not just the medical? I know that's really important, but every time they've ever come to my home, respond to my husband who was in like a diabetic, you know, downturn. They have been so responsive and, and they're, and they're, and so good about how they respond to people. I'm kind of wondering, is there training or is that just natural?
Well, I think, I think part of it is the people we hire, you know, firefighting generally, you, you get, you get folks that want to help people. It's kind of a business. It's not really a, you're not going to break the bank, you're not going to, you know, make tons of money. You'll be comfortable, it's a great paying job, it's got great benefits. But you, you, you do it because you love it. You love helping people and you like doing your job. And, and that's what our folks do and they take great pride in that. They, they, they love having a good outcome and making a positive difference in somebody's life. You know, that's one of the things we try to do every day, is go in there and make somebody's day better, just by showing up and doing something. We can't always do it, but we, we give it best shot at it. And it's, it's rewarding for us too frankly. It's, it's a great, it's a great kick that, you know, to go help somebody. You say a diabetic that's having a problem and you have to either give them sugar or you get them to where they can get the help and they, and their situation's better and it's great. It's a great feeling. And that's, that's basically what it is. There's good people doing a great job.
They are the best. And I tell, you tell them thank you.
Will, thank you.
Uh, thank you, man. If, if you have an opportunity to go to Fire Ops and get over there and go through that, it is amazing. So any of the council members that haven't done it, definitely should try to, it gives you a different appreciation for what the men and women of the fire department do each and every day to, to keep us safe. I had a question around response times since COVID. Have you tracked, are our response times better or are they staying the same? Just curious because obviously the lighter load of traffic, et cetera, didn't know how that affected us within our community.
Oh, you know what? We have not looked at it yet. That's a good question because you're right. We have had lighter traffic volumes and that is the, one of the things we cannot control is traffic. So you know, our response times tend to get a little bit longer each year and, and we try to get our turnout times down, but we just can't control traffic. So that's a good question. We'll, we'll look at that. As far as I know, it, it really hasn't impacted us. It may be favorably actually. But the calls, the call volume is, has been, is up and down, is starting to level, is starting to get back up to where it was. But for a while, we were, we were seeing half the calls a day we were, we would for a while. And I'm not sure if people were just staying home or getting out, getting in trouble or what it was. But the calls went way down and now they're starting to creep back up to kind of pre-COVID, like normal levels, I would say. But that's a great, that's a great question. I'll, I'll, I'll look in and see if we can get some information on that.
Great, thank you. And then the deputy mayor asked a question about dryer vent fires. What is the, the number one cause of house fires in our community?
Cooking, unattended food or kitchen fires. That's the number one.
Okay, any barbecue type fires? Do we have any of those?
We get those, it, it, those happen, outside stuff, but mostly it's, it's something to do with inside, you know, just people leaving food on the stove. I don't know, it's probably one out of five, you know, potential fires we get is, is, is directly related to kitchen fires.
Wow, okay. And then a lot of the jurisdictions are requiring sprinklers now in, in homes, single-family homes. Have we or is anyone doing studies to determine whether or not the sprinkler systems within those single-family residences will put the fire out prior to your arrival and/or is it helping once you arrive on scene to diminish the amount of work that you have to do to put out the fire?
Yes, I know there, there's work, there's facts and things. I know residential sprinklers have come miles and miles since they were first introduced and they're much more reliable. They do a great job. They often keep a fire checked to the room of origin. So one sprinkler head puts it out. The, the, usually the, the biggest angst with those is they cause water damage. Because obviously, once the head opens, it's, it's flowing water until you shut it off. And so quite often people see the water damage and, and, and think it did more damage than it would have. But you know, had the fire gone unchecked, you've got all the smoke damage and then the loss of property. So kind of a little trade-off there. Plus residential sprinklers don't put quite the amount of water out as a commercial sprinkler would too. So there's a little bit less water damage. I don't have that figure on save rates on that, but I know they're very helpful. They do a very good job at putting fires out.
Good. I was mainly asking because I think there, there's another benefit that we don't often look at and that's the life. The factor of you guys going in and fighting the fire and if there's something that can mitigate that ahead of time, that, that does help. So.
Absolutely. And they're really valuable. More often than not right now, we, we have them required for houses that are hard to access or big houses that, you know, they're off the, the path for ways. We may not have a hydrant that's nearby, so it gives them a fighting chance to save the residents. You know, if we get there, we needed shuttle water or whatever, they can put that fire out or control it, keep it under control till we get there. That's, that's great. Thank you, chief.
All right. Looks like everyone had their questions answered for now.
Okay. Yeah, sure. So I'll move on. So the budget request, I was getting into it. So we have a request for, to, to add to our response overtime staffing. We've kind of touched on this, $35,000 increase over the biennium. Now, this is based on historical numbers of what our overtime has been for response overtime. And just so the council knows, our department has essentially two different kinds of overtime. There's more than that. But two big ones, there's response overtime and there's training overtime. So we, we budget for overtime related directly to training. And it could be for anything, professional development or whatever. And, and that training overtime, we have complete control over. So if we get into a pinch and we just, we have to stop all kinds, we have to, you know, cut things out. We can cut training overtime out and save that money. Now, it's not ideal clearly because the training is important, but that is something we can control. Response overtime, we don't have as much control because as I'd mentioned earlier, this, this really has to do with keeping our numbers at 12 every day and it's for backfill to keep those people in the seat. So it's, it's for sick leave and long-term disabilities that we, we try to, we try to project, but we can't really always plan for. As I said earlier, in 19, we had a span of 12 or 15 people off on long-term disability for a number of weeks was just crazy. And that's, that's very unusual, but how do you predict that, right? So we do the best we can and try to get the averages and yearly averages to come up with a number for the response overtime. And that's why we're asking for the $35,000 in the next budget. As far as budget reductions, I believe every department was touched by this, the COVID, the reductions. Fire Department lost a training admin assistant in June. We have our record specialist leaving in September and that position will not be filled. So we'll keep those open. And we did find some money. We went through the budget. Did our best to kind of do some belt tightening and go through there and looked at past history on the M and O. And it was through several different areas. This was not in one area, but all through the budget we scoured. And areas like attractive equipment, operating supplies, professional services, repairs and maintenance, small tools, minor equipment, all kinds of stuff. We were able to find $138,000 in savings that we feel comfortable, that we can, we can live with there. And, and those are, I would say, it's between like a $3,000 item and a $9,000. So it's a bunch of smaller items. We just went through and culled out of the, of the budget to come up with that 138. So future opportunities, here's the big wish list, you know, we, we have more, but we just kind of highlighted some of this. This obviously is, we know is, you know, if we had, we had tons of money, we could, we could help everybody out. What would you want? So one of them is the ladder truck replacement. Our ladder truck was due to be replaced in 2021. It's about a $1.4 million item. It's expensive. I believe the finance director mentioned yesterday that there is no money in the asset replacement to do that right now. So the likelihood of being able to do that in 21 is not good. But this, this rig is getting toward the end of its useful life. It's a 2004 unit, so 16 years old. Repairs are starting to add up. So that's something that we, if we have the opportunity, we'd love to get that replaced. A drone could be a really effective tool for us and police have already identified their needs for that. And even I think Public Works could probably use it as well. But we could use a drone for several uses to get 360-degree pictures of fires, which is required by NFPA 1921. We could take really good pre-fire photos of occupancies. Because sometimes we use Google Maps and those get kind of blurry. So having a drone can give you a great picture. And then they can make some phenomenal training videos for us. So a drone could be a huge help. Ideally, we'd like to expand our community risk reduction or C R R, you've probably read that term, or public education in several different areas. Some of them, just a quick smattering would be a smoke detector program for some of our lower-income community members. A fall protection program for some of our older community adults. Expansion of the schools program in grades one through three for our younger community members. And then expansion of some of the open house activities. We have the open house in October and those are well received and we'd like to expand that. And then one thing that came up that I hadn't thought about, which is a great idea, is a virtual reality headset. Because I, I understand those can give awesome fire safety lessons. When you're in that 3D, you're in that deal. It's, it's amazing what they can do with those. And we've identified the, and I think council member Zorn's mentioned this, a social worker, in addition to the M I H. We have the M I H program going, right? And it's got a social worker and a firefighter and police have their navigator program. But a social worker that's, that would be a, a Bothell-specific resource could be very valuable. And, and this would help to expand the, will help, help us to reduce some of those repeat calls. Get folks that are, that need that, that social help that we can't provide, get them the help they need, get them pointed in the right direction. So that could be a huge benefit. And then finally, it's, it's been established that the fire service is vital, yet expensive. And we all, we all get that. We talked about how expensive this thing is. There is an opportunity to capture some efficiencies and cost savings through shared services that would keep our current high level of service intact. And I will leave it at that. And any questions from anybody?
Nice presentation, chief. Do you know how many mutual aid responses we had last year?
That we gave or received?
That we received.
No, but I would, I would say, we get a daily report from our battalion chiefs. And it's between, I would say, average of two or three a day that we get. And it, it's, that's really hard to pin down because that does not mean we didn't go on that call. It just means that somebody else came into our area. So it, quite often on the east border, Woodinville is close, so they, they come in first because they're closest. And sometimes they handle by themselves or sometimes we meet them there. So we, we, we usually get two or three a day and we usually respond by giving one or two out a day. So it's the same thing. We may go into Woodinville or Kirkland and they may come and meet us and, and that kind of thing.
Okay. Now, I noticed in the police, they showed us that they had a number of retirees that the positions weren't filled, they were just frozen. Did you have a number of retirees that those positions aren't filled?
Well, we have three, three FTE firefighter operations spots that we haven't filled yet. I believe those are going to be filled in this next budget. I believe that's the plan. But we are, we're doing okay right now with numbers.
Okay. Now, you, you mentioned in your last bullet point about some sort of mutual agreement with another agency. Do you, are you guys going to pursue that at all or do you need the council to make that decision or?
Yes, I believe, we, we had some preliminary talks. The chief of Woodinville has, has approached us. You know, he recognizes the cities having some, some budget concerns right now. And the fire districts may be seeing some kind of a downturn in a year or two as the assessed valuation fluctuates for them. So he's, he's looking for opportunities for us to potentially share services. So we're, we're looking at that. We've done some very, very preliminary looks at this, haven't really got into it. And I, I believe that the city manager would, would, would ask, is the council consider that and give direction on July 7th for us to, to continue this or not?
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
It worked. Thank you, chief. I just wanted to weigh in and say I am really highly in favor of using public safety levy money for a social worker. That's my two cents.
Cool. Cool.
Thank you. And could you describe the social worker's role a little bit further? Because I'm not sure I quite understood that.
Well, I think what I would envision this would be is the similar to what the M I H program has, the King County has established. This one would be the same idea where they, they know how to get services for people. They can, they can say, this person's calling because they have an addiction problem or they're homeless or whatever the problem is. And they know resources and how to connect people with resources. And and generally, this would, this kind of a, you know, envisioning this would be someone that's a city resource, at the city primarily for, for Bothel citizens. So we could, we could have, the crews would know that, be able to respond or not respond, but refer clients to that person and they can make personal contact with, with the individuals. It's been found to be very effective. The M I H program is awesome because they actually, they call people and make an appointment. They show up at their door. It's not just on the phone, hey, do you need help? I can help you. It's a personal contact. I don't know if this would necessarily be that, but if we had some kind of resource to give folks, you know, help, even if it's the firefighters, even if, if they say, hey, you know, you can do this with this person and we could give them that resource. That, that'd be better than we have now in a lot of cases.
So I, I just want to say that that is a great need in this community. And and the need is basically, so somebody answers the phone or answers the call, however you contact, and they help them navigate the system. That's a big need and it's really important. So thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely. Sales?
So Chief, I'll just ask, so both you and Chief Superlick spoke about the drones today. And then you were even bringing it up with Public Works could have some use. I mean, is it, I mean, it sounds like you guys wouldn't be using it full time. So is there a possibility of getting one that could be a multi-purpose drone for the city in general?
Absolutely. I, I, I absolutely think that. There would, yeah. You, you need an operator that's very well qualified on those. And so if we had a shared service between the three of us or any other department, they could use it. It'd be great. You'd have to have the person on, you know, some kind of twenty-four hour, you know, call, right? Because, you know, if the police needed in the middle of the night to do something or we needed or something, you know, that kind of thing. We'd, there goes City Hall. We'd, we, we need to have the ability to, to, to call it out. But I think it would make much more sense to have it shared than just a, a single resource. We actually put that on their list without knowing the police were gonna put theirs on the list and then we saw it on their list too. So, yeah, I, I think it'd be a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, that, that one sounds potentially good because, because, yeah, at first, when it was just one department talking about it, you're like, oh, that's probably gonna sit around for half the time or more. But if it could be one that would be multi-purpose for the three departments or citywide, that definitely has some benefits if it can serve those purposes for everyone.
Yeah, and I don't know how they did work that. I think Eastside Fire has one and I believe they, they contract an individual to run it. You have to have a license and that kind of thing. And the person, he just loves doing it. It's like a ham operator. They just love doing that kind of stuff. And he's great at it and he comes out and does all kinds of stuff. So if we could find someone like that that lived in the community, that was, that was willing to, to take on that project, I think it'd be great, very helpful.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Great presentation.
You're welcome.
Everyone tapped out? All right, yep, not seeing anything else. So. Councilmember McNeil?
Motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Thompson. All right, we have a motion and a second for adjournment. Everyone nod, thumbs up, agreement. All right, we're good. Thank you, everyone. Night two in the books and we'll see you again tomorrow evening.
Good day.